We have an exciting day planned and we want to begin as soon as possible this morning. We'll start with a few reflections on yesterday. You did have some homework. I'm not sure if you got an opportunity to complete that, but if so, we'd like to hear either reflections on yesterday, including any comments that you might have made on your homework, or just reflections in general. Who would like to start? And we'll remind you also to use your microphones today too, so that we are able to capture all of the proceedings of the day. Thank you, Ms. Hall, for agreeing to go first.
Okay. It was very interesting what policies would be responsive to teacher burnout, because we can look at a real big picture. I thought about year-round schools, you know? I've always been an advocate for that. But that would take a year, two years to get implemented. So what's something we could do immediately that would affect teacher burnout? And I thought about duty-free lunch, two days a week. That would be revolutionary. And that's something doable that could happen in the school building, that each teacher got two days a week that they didn't have to go to lunch with kids. A double planning period once a month, once a week. Two planning periods. I know that seems like nothing to us, but it's great if you're a teacher in a classroom. And then, what would be the impact of these policies? It would give you more team planning time, the less need for multiple lesson plans. If you go to single-subject teaching, say at 4th grade, you're outstanding math teacher, teachers all math. I've always been talking about that, departmentalizing at 4th. And then, what policies might help prevent teacher burnout? Poor relationships, lack of fairness. There was always this thing about the new teacher would get all the worst kids, you know, some kind of way you'd end up with 10 kids who were disciplinary problems. And the other teachers did not have that. So making sure that fairness is there, and that the teachers have a chance to organize the classrooms. You know, I don't know why we feel that only administrators could do that, but you could let a 5th grade class team of teachers sit down and distribute the kids, and that would give them some input, to me, in that. So those are the main things. And last thing, vocal recognition. Everyone likes to be recognized and feel that they're important to the team. So just saying, congratulations, Dr. Hoskins-Brown. Your homeroom had perfect attendance this morning on the morning announcement. Now, what is that to say? Nothing. But that's going to make Dr. Hoskins-Brown think, hey, it's great that all my kids are here at school today. So that kind of thing, I thought. Thank you.
Thank you for your contributions this morning. Any other reflections, or Dr. Hoskins-Brown?
Good morning. I had two. And one is, I was one that I've been talking about with Mr. Ray and Mr. Feliciano, and that is an inclusion, diversity, equity, and accessibility policy and culture that really embraces where teachers are. And the reason I mention that is because there are a number of steps of experience that we get to before we get to burnout, where we can ask for help, or we can, or there are parts of our work culture that contribute to burnout. And I like the acronym IDEA, rather than DEIA or DEI, because a lot of people are getting burnt out on that term, and it means something for them racially and socioeconomically that really distracts from what you're trying to achieve. So I think doing that with, in a way that can also help us address differentiated wellness can get us some steps prior to burnout. And the other thing, I think, is decorum, having an orientation in our school board member process that includes decorum expectations on discussing district and school performance. I'm guilty of this when I first came on board. You're so used to being in those talking points on the campaign trail that you're going to come in, you're going to change something, or you're going to do something, you're going to, mine was accountability, accessibility, and I can't remember what the third thing was. But I promise, and my point about that is that when we get in the board meeting, I did this, you felt like, okay, I'm going to, I'm going to address the gorilla in the room, the elephant in the room, and I'm going to talk about how this school is not performing well. But we heard yesterday how really damaging that is to the workforce. And so, but we don't talk about how we should constructively talk about performance in meetings. We either avoid school names altogether, or we dive in. So I think something as a board, coming up with some decorum of how we do that in a constructive way that allows us to have the conversations we need to have without demoralizing our team is helpful. And I think the impact would be, it's going to cost time and effort in supervisors and HR professionals to be working within an IDEA context, no longer looking at, can we prove that someone did something to you that merits EEOC action, rather having preventative conversations about where you're sitting in your space. That takes time. Humans talking to humans takes time. So that will be a personnel cost. And talking about our decorum is going to require self-policing by the board, which sometimes we're good at, and sometimes we're not.
Thank you. Ms. Grabowski, and then Dr. Howard Hall.
Good morning. So yesterday was fantastic, and loved having the energy of the teachers with us. So thank you for bringing them in to be with us. So a couple of things that I made note of was, one, was ensuring that we are paying for all extracurricular activities equally. So I know we pay our coaches, but I have heard that our teachers who take on clubs, for example, don't get any extra compensation. And I think that's an easy thing that we absolutely need to address to express our appreciation. And what that would do was ensure that we are addressing, excuse me, that those clubs are just as important as athletics, and make our teachers feel valued as they are. Another note I made was to potentially create an ombudsman position that is outside of the school and outside of 208. I hear a lot about, you know, the school versus 208, we can't do that because the district, you know, those types of things. And I think having someone that is outside and neutral, that someone could go to, whether it's between a teacher and administrator at the school, or at the district, wherever it may be, could help reduce the fear of retaliation, and give teachers somewhere to express their voice. And it doesn't, and then it's something outside of counseling to try and resolve any issues that might exist. As far as policies, one I made was set a maximum time for the number of hours per week or per month, whatever that looks like, when teachers are pulled from the classroom, whether it's for meetings, or training, or et cetera, just to make sure that they're not, because I hear teachers getting pulled, like, we got pulled for a meeting, oh, and I got pulled for training, and those aren't necessarily coordinated. And that would help to reduce stress for teachers and protect planning time. And then, one final one was for strategies to reduce paperwork in any way possible to evaluate all the paperwork that teachers have to complete and signature.
Thank you. Dr. Howard Hall?
Yes, just sitting here thinking about something that was required in Title I called the Teacher-Student-Parent Compact. And it's, it looks good on paper, what the teacher will do, what the parent will do, and what the student will do. But after a while, it became a task. Oh, get your parents to sign it, got it all checked off, turn it into the state. We need to just make sure that documents like that are fluid, because that's a part of accountability, not only for the teachers, but for parents as well as students. And it's great, but just trying to find a way to actually make those compacts more fluid.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, and then Mr. Ketchmore, and then Dr. Buck.
Yesterday was fantastic. I really enjoyed the teachers. I think we need more of that. So kind of going before we get into like changing policies and stuff, I think that having a workshop where we have the Teachers of the Year from the schools, like the Professional Senate, the Teachers Senate, be able to meet with the board, and really, and so that way the board, and have like the Conference Institute or someone facilitate that, so that way the board and the teachers can really have, can have that relationship and open communication, no board's bar, kind of like what they did with a burnout report, where Superintendent Woods just said, y'all have at it, nothing is off the table, and walked out the room. Other ideas that can also, and that can help with the policy, and what we can feasibly do as a district. Some things that we can do in the meantime is maybe look at doing a supplement for teachers, to be able to purchase those items, those extra items outside of the normal realm that they get for their classrooms, because a lot of teachers complain about having, spending money out of their own pocket to buy those things. Also, if we can look at, as a district, about when we roll out programs, when we roll out multiple of them, make sure that the training isn't like just stacked on each other, so that way they don't feel overwhelmed about always having to be in training before they can even get their classroom set up for the next school year.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Ketchmore?
Good morning. Some of this is a repeat of what others said. Some of it is a repeat of things that have been discussed in the past. And all of these don't come from me, they come from teachers who have talked to me. Number one, reduce testing and assessments. Let's focus on what we really need, and I know it's an ongoing discussion. Number two, I mentioned this yesterday, if you're a successful teacher, you're above the curve, you're showing growth, your kids are on grade level or above, year after year after year, maybe reduce your administrative burden and give you more freedom, because you've proven yourself. Number three, please mention this, but I've raised this before too. First, raise the pay of our teachers who volunteer for extracurriculars, coaching sports, but for coaching drama club, and going on field trips for Odyssey of the Mind and that kind of stuff. Some didn't get paid at all, some got a base stipend, not based on the hours worked. I think those numbers need to go up. Some teachers have suggested rotating non-classroom duty. Teachers have bus duty, hallway duty, lunch duty, et cetera. Maybe your, these two teachers are it for this week, but that frees up some time for planning, et cetera, for other teachers who's in the grade group, to the extent that's doable. Streamline the administrative things that teachers need to do and paperwork. There's a lot of repetitiveness, some of the feedback we've gotten. And then, I think it was mentioned yesterday, but again, let's sit down with the Senate and say, what policies, what board policies make your life more difficult? Where can we streamline policies and, not just policies, what we actually do day to day? What's annoying, where you have to fill out five of these, and they have to go to seven different people, instead of, you know, what could we do? Let's get their feedback there, roots on the ground.
Thank you, Mr. Ketchmore. Dr. Buck?
I think Ms. Grabowski and Mr. Ketchmore kind of said what I was going to say, but to me, when we became very technology-oriented, we thought we were going to do less paper stuff. To me, we have doubled and tripled the amount of what we require in a school by virtue of paper and technology. And I think what Mr. Ketchmore just suggested and Ms. Grabowski has so much merit, I believe that it would be very beneficial for us to literally just start with a teacher walking into the class, or walking into the school in the morning, and from that point till she comes back the next day. How does she interface with the district? Technology-wise, paper copy-wise, whatever it is. Because I think that would save us a lot of, and I'm not trying to save money, I'm trying to save burnout. And it seems to me, you know, you as a board, I as a board, all of our documents are onboard docs, and how many pieces of paper do we deal with in a board meeting every time? Because some of us find that easier to deal with. Teachers, for the most part, are way more technologically savvy than I am. And I think if we could take away things, do away with things, we would be better off, and teachers would be much happier.
Thank you. Dr. Brinkman, and then Mrs. Hines.
A bunch of people have said it, but I, it was one of the things, a guaranteed planning period. I think we, you know, I know we're in a teacher shortage, so things are getting pulled here and there, but we've got to work back to, that is not something that's, oh, I actually get it today. It's something that should happen, and if it isn't happening on a regular basis, people need to be compensated for whatever else they're doing and covering during their planning period. And I've been saying this since I got elected last time. I would love to see us pilot a four-day week with the fifth day either not even occurring because we've had enough hours in each of those four days, or a normal classroom, like we have now scheduled of four days, and then a fifth day being for students that are excelling digital, for students that are struggling, one-on-one, more intervention from that teacher on the digital side.
Thank you. Mrs. Hines?
I agree with everything that's been said. Not to the vet, but there's one thing that we have not mentioned. One thing that causes teachers' burnout is children behavior, and how we can make this a little better for the teachers. I know we have our handbook, our policy handbook, but the teachers are saying it's not working, because the children are misbehaved. And even if you're trying to get something done in the classroom, then you got a clown in the back of the classroom. It's very difficult to get things done. So how we can improve this to make life better for teachers is a big question. But I'll leave that to the educators that I'm leaving.
Thank you, Mrs. Hines. Mr. Ketchmore?
I just have a question. Couple of people mentioned either year-round school, or the staggered school, or the four-day week. It came up yesterday and today. These are things we've discussed in the past. And I'm asking this question, didn't we do a survey and ask parents, what are you all interested in? Because we talked about maybe doing a year-round model within a K-12 pathway, so it was self-contained, but regular school in the rest of the district. Did we do it, went wrong? Did we do a survey and get feedback? And it was...
We didn't do a survey. We had lots of conversations about year-round models. So I think if that is of interest, and certainly, we're operating basically in a year-round model, because we have some students who are with us really through June, and then they're back in July. So with the kind of summer programming we have, some of those young people are home for a few days, and then they're right back, and they're there with us until June 30. And some through parts of July, depending on what programs they're in. So I think it's all in how you define year-round schools, or how you define a year-round calendar. There are districts that run on a year-round calendar. I think it's worth looking into. We're not necessarily an agricultural community, and we're not a community that is, we're a tourism community, but our greatest time for tourism is October, not in the middle of the summer. So I think we just need to have some conversation about it, maybe put a group together, and then help the community understand that, what that means, and what that implies for their families. I would love to see that happen. Yes, ma'am.
I don't know, I don't want to take too much time, but just kind of on that subject, I seem to remember at least a survey of the teachers, or something like that, maybe I'm misremembering. I think the model we have right now is a really great model that provides room for the students who need it to receive extra training. And it also allows teachers who want to work more to be able to do that. My biggest concern, and thing that I, not biggest concern, but one thing that I would definitely want to vet if we move towards that model, is the teachers, especially when we talk about burnout, because I know a lot of teachers, that one of the reasons they're teachers is they get their summers off, and they really look forward to that summer. And so I think that that's a really important consideration that, I know it's been discussed.
And there again is, what's the definition of year-round? Because when you are in school for 60 days, and you have three weeks off, you are getting a vacation, you know. So I think we want to talk about what's the definition, and not necessarily think of it as, people are going to be in school 12 months, you know, nonstop. It's a whole different animal. I've lived on the year-round calendar, and frankly, I love the year-round calendar. But the year-round was, you know, 45, 15, 45 days in, 15 days off, 45 days in, 15 days off, which gives everybody time to disconnect from all the things that drive them, you know, just a little batty.
But this creates a headache for parents during those 15 days off, because they don't have, some, those that work don't have, don't always have...
Well, and that's why I said it, it requires community support. Remember, I want to say this again. We have students six hours a day. If we're lucky, we have a number who come late and leave early, and we have them 180 days a year if they have perfect attendance. That is not always the case. The rest of the day in the year, they are with someone else, even when we have e-learning days, even when we have holidays. So moving to a year-round calendar, even 45, 15, requires a collective responsibility in the community. And the school district can be a part of that by making sure that we have programs and options available for parents. But again, it is a parental responsibility for childcare. And a lot is laid at the feet of the school, so when we attempt these different things, we have to remember, we still have to bring the community along. But I think it's worth a good conversation, and worth helping the community understand its role in supporting children when they're out of school. And I think, I think we can do that. So thank you for your feedback this morning. I hope you'll continue to think about those things. When you came in this morning, you were board members, were given an envelope. We have a field trip this morning. We're going to go right downstairs to the field. So I'm going to invite you to take about five minutes and review your, the note that you received this morning. Try to make sure that you are familiar with it. And then we're going to move downstairs to the field. The other staff can choose to remain in the room, or they can choose to watch you from the deck.
Nice.
When we come back in, we will have a few minutes to debrief the activity. But what I'd love for you to do is to, you are welcome to take your sheet with you as well, but that is your student, that's your seven-year-old. I want you to be familiar with your seven-year-old so that you can follow the instructions when we get downstairs. Okay? So I'm going to take five minutes to read, and then we're going to move downstairs to the field, and I will meet you downstairs.
We have a no-taping and social media, compact ones we're downstairs.
That's correct. That's correct. So...
I want to see Roger on TikTok later.
So actually, I'm going to put Kurt in charge of making you, making sure you get downstairs, all right?
Yeah.
So all of the staff, let's give our board members a big round of applause for being great students this morning. They were second graders, and they had an opportunity to read about some of the students that our teachers have an experience with every day. But I want to know from them, what realization did you have from that experience?
You mean, board members who did it, or staff?
Board members. Oh, no, the staff. We'll talk about that later. But I, yeah, would love to know just what your thoughts were as, when you took a look around, or as you heard the descriptors, what were your thoughts?
I'll start. First thing I thought of is that I figured that the child that I was representing may not know how to interact with the other children around them, may not understand all of those privileges. And Donna's giving me a wonderful opportunity to learn about socioeconomic diversity right now in my neighborhood. And so I'm seeing how individuals with different levels of privilege may respond one to another. And so inasmuch as I saw that we would be separated by achievement, I also saw opportunities for ridicule and bullying and harassment. That made me concerned, like, would this character that I was representing be someone who would treat others in an unfortunate way? Or would the others who were disadvantaged feel some kind of way about the progress being made by a privileged young person, and harass them, and contaminate, you know, the academic culture of the classroom they're sitting in?
Thank you. Mrs. Hall?
I was exhilarated to be as privileged as I was. And I think this is an exercise we need to do at board meetings, for the public to see in some kind of way, because this is the key to understanding everything. As opposed to Deion's child feeling like that, I think I would be interested in getting to know those children who were different from me, and getting to make them as much a part of my world as possible. I see little kids have the capacity to do that. So that's what I'm hoping. And by the way, guys, I've read that the more children who are in poverty interact with children who are not, the better their outcomes are. So to me, this would be a, you know, I don't know that a seven-year-old would be able to say this, but that's what I would hope would happen, that my privilege and someone else's lack of privilege, that we would some kind of way meet.
Dr. Brinkman?
Yeah, I mean, this is my children. This is me. And it's what teachers, you know, we need to remember that this is what teachers are juggling every day. And as Ms. Frazier said yesterday, all the things that you're teaching in between these subjects, this is one of them, trying to get the student that they can assume to some part, or know from conversations with that child, is very privileged, to be able to interact and learn from the child that isn't as privileged. And then I think as a parent, and I try my hardest to do this with my children, is to get them to understand what they do have, so that they fully appreciate what they have, so that they aren't the privileged child that won't take the opportunities to bridge the gap. Because I'm sure there are children on both sides that are like, I, you know, I can't interact with them because they're nothing like me, where really, I think the beauty of public education is, you have a classroom that cuts across all of those levels, and if children can usually do it pretty well, if they haven't been educated to not do it. And I think that's where our teachers have to work really hard, outside of the core subjects and all those other teaching moments.
Great. Mrs. Grabowski, and then Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, this is very similar course to what Stuff Up Savannah does, with their poverty simulation that many of us have been through. And I think exercises like this would be really powerful. Deep Center did one, maybe three years ago, really around policy that was geared towards students, which I think was an excellent experience. And maybe something that would be beneficial for all of our teachers to do, to ensure that our teachers also have that understanding. But I think, you know, I wasn't surprised, obviously, by where we all ended up. But one of the things in here, that one of the characteristics was the expectation of if you're going to college. And it doesn't have to be the expectation you're going to college, but the expectation that you will be successful. And that's something that should be there for every child, and they should, and children should not be prejudged because they have these other things happening in their home that they cannot control.
Right. They shouldn't be penalized for the unearned disadvantage.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, and then Dr. Howard Hall, and then Mr. Moss.
This is actually something that I had, my high school wrestling coach did to us. And it was very I have been of how privileged some people were. I mean, granted, I went to B.C., so there was a lot of privileged kids there. And they didn't realize where some of the other wrestlers came from. And they, and at the end of the day, they didn't care, because we were all teammates. But the coach wanted to make sure that they understood, all the kids understood why they don't have the biggest and the best, or the newest car, or the BMW, or whatever it might be. And one thing that I found very interesting that wasn't in this one, as the student, is that one of the questions, some of the questions that were asked of us was, are your parents divorced? And do you have a father figure and a mother figure, two adults that are helping raise you? And they also asked, do you have a parent that has been or is currently incarcerated? Because those are also very large things that affects children's psychological emotions. Uh, because those are also very large things that affects children's, um, psychological emotions. Uh, one thing that, you know, if we ever did something like this in the future, I think it would be also eye-opening if we not only did it as a student, but also what our real lives were, were like growing up, and where we started from, and now where we are today.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Dr. Howard Hall?
Yes, some schools, you know, when you think about it, they don't have the diversity of the privileged group in the lower-middle class and, 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 well, middle class and lower-middle class. Some schools, everybody's on that same line, period, because they're in poverty. So, that goes back to teacher burnout, and then it makes you reflect on teacher's pay. Some teachers are at schools where everything is fine, kids are privileged, and they're excelling well. And in others, in other cases, you know, it's a whole other ballgame. So, this all kind of segues back to teacher burnout when you have, you, when you, um, teaching at a school that is high poverty, low achieving. So, that makes a big difference.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Moss, and then, um, Dr. Bregman, Ms. Hines will have the last word.
Um, sorry. I'm talking to the mic. Um, you know, when we did Savannah Children's Choir, we were an intentionally diverse choir. So, we had kids literally from every walk of life. And what was great for them, I look at it differently. What was great for our privileged kids was to see our poor kids excelling beyond them. They didn't have that advantage, but they worked harder. So, that was, no, and as far as the bullying and everything, that's about the culture of the school. And, and that's something that we have to work on in each school, is making sure that we are protecting all of our kids from bullying. Um, the other thing, other observation I have of this exercise, it was a great exercise, is it also shows us how important it is, and I say this a lot, that education is everybody's business. So, we need outside help. We need, we need tutors. We need companies that, that work with schools and sponsoring schools. We, we need the entire community because it's going to take the entire community to work with these kids with different issues. You know, the one, the other thing I would add, yeah, because we had, you know, one year at Savannah Classical, I know that we had over forty kids whose family was impacted by gun violence in one year. That is another thing that we have to look at, and that is why, you know, we've got to have social workers in schools. That's why we have to have that support system. That's what, that, that's what the exercise showed, is that we, we need more outside help, because a teacher can't do it all.
Thank you, Mrs. Hines.
Yes, ma'am. Well, unfortunately, my little person did not move out there on that, from that ten, tenure line. But I can identify with this little. Okay, there were a couple more. But I can identify with this, uh, little person because basically, uh, I grew up in a very large family, new car, and, uh, we, transportation was almost out of. I think I just shared my life over here with David this morning at his table. I didn't know we were going to do this kind of exercise. But, uh, even as I taught school, I'd always tried to connect with that child that was withdrawn, did not communicate very well with others, and see how I could impact that child's life. And I was able many times to, 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 to do just this thing. And many times I had children who did not perform very well in the other classes at all. But because that special interest was shown to them, uh, made an impact on their lives. And I can give you some examples if time would allow. But nevertheless, um, it's the kind of care that a teacher shows, even though that child may not be, uh, from an affluent family. But, and again, I was taught that if you get an education, and I pass this over to my students, no one can take that away from you. So, if we inculcate this is, this into children, the teachers are successful, and those kids come back and say, I thank you, it makes you feel wonderful. And I, that's the way I feel today, that the lives I've impacted.
Thank you, Ms. Hines. Dr. Bregman has last comment?
We're, we're all thinking about it from a student perspective because that's how it was done. But I also think we need to be cognizant that within each one of our school buildings, if we were to look at the staff in that school building and, and did this same, not all teachers are on, you know, they're all teachers with our district, but where would they be even in their life with what's going on? Like we talked about yesterday, outside of the classroom, or how many generations are they away from some of these children and how they grew up? So, as, as you say, when you're, you're starting to sign. So, um, I think that is really where we have to think about our teachers and our staff. Even inside a building, we think, yeah, they've come together, but there are definitely differences there. And how do we help teachers with more privilege, help teachers that, you know, are either privileged with experience? And, and do every, does every privileged teacher with that much experience actually help out the new teacher? Are they just like, eh, that's too much effort? And, and how do we indoctrinate everybody inside of each one of our buildings to really come along and be, you know, a lion, or an atom smasher, or those type of things to really get on board with, with that idea? Oh, whoa, whoa, I'm sorry. I was trying not to, I was trying not to start it, but if you want to, I was trying intentionally not to say bulldog, but it's okay.
Okay, well, the mantra of a blue jacket says. Inclusion, diversity, equity, and accessibility. I really, really hope, just putting in a plug. All of what we're talking about is inclusion, diversity, equity, and accessibility. So, I hope you will be receptive to a policy, because I'm going to keep working to try to have us have one.
Thank you. And Ms. Hall?
I promise.
Okay, thirty seconds.
Imagine if, because all of us board members are privileged, all of us are. I said to Dr. Levent, suppose we pushed for those who are not privileged to run for office. Suppose we had some on the board who are not privileged, because no matter where we started, we're privileged now. If not, one of us is not. So, that's something to think about all the way up to chain. And would that affect our policies if some of us did not come up? You know, with our parents not saying you're going to college, but which college are you going to? Thank you.
Thank you. Now, let's give our board members and, um, so it's called the Opportunity Walk, it's not called the Privileged Walk, it is in other circles. Um, but the bottom line is, that final picture is what our teachers deal with on a daily basis. We did not deal with student achievement, we dealt with all the factors that impact student achievement. You'll hear more about that this afternoon. But I, what I want you to remember is that every child who walks in that classroom comes in at a different place. And I'm going to repeat what I said yesterday. We do not have, nor do we want, the luxury of rejecting children because they do not meet our standard. What we do every day is we take them, we receive them, whether it's August, September, November, or April. We take them, and we take them from where they are to where we can, where we want them to go. Teachers, at the end, what you saw out there is what they deal with every day. So, when we talk about burnout, we talk about the realities of the classroom. Remember, we have them six hours a day, and if we're fortunate, we have them one hundred and eighty days a year. So, we must protect that time, and we must recognize the diversity in the classroom, even among those that we consider to be the privileged. So, I, I say to you, I hope the experience this morning represented in part what we have, uh, what we deal with daily, but also the complexity of the teaching process. They're not all Blue Bell ice cream, they're not all Leopols, where you can kind of pick out whatever doesn't work. We get them where they are, and we take them where we need them to go. So, I thank you for your full participation. Um, any observations, Dr. Buck? He, he had the opportunity to, to watch from above.
I, um, I, I would say, uh, I liked what Denise said about not all going to college, but all being successful. But when you said that, it jumped out at me that for many of our children, they don't have a very realistic picture of what success is. Success is the pro-ball player who's, all they see is jewels and diamonds. It's the rap star, the rock star, the, uh, you know, those kinds of things. And so, in one sense, it seems to me that we have to interpret for them and help them to understand what success is. That privilege may come not from making a huge living, but from having a successful life of serving. And that's a huge concept for a lot of people. I, I was struck, as you said, what you said, and I have, I don't think I've ever shared it with any of you, but many of you know that when my little town integrated, all of the white teachers walked out, except my mom. And my mom stayed. And so, for the next several years, all the black kids were bussed over to our white school. But mother was one of two white teachers that stayed there, and my mother was an English teacher. And mother said, black kids need to learn to diagram a sentence just as much as white students. And that was, in her mind, one of her reasons for staying. But in my car, out there in the parking lot, I carry a, a note that one of my mom's students wrote to her when she was teaching. And it was, by the way, kind of, you will love it because it was in perfect script. Uh, it was not printed. But this young woman said, I might have been just a poor little Negro student, but you made me into a full human being, and I thank you for that. And she signed that with great flourish, and it was sent to my mom, left on her books one day. I carry that in my car every day because, to me, that, again, determines what we are all about. While, you know, none of us did it for the big salaries we get. Staff gets big salaries.
I don't know about that part.
Anyway, I, I, I think helping students learn how to know what success is is as important as being successful.
Alright, thank you, sir. Thank you. That wraps up. We are delighted this morning. If you will join me in welcoming Mr. Jackson, who will, um, talk about another requested topic for this morning, and that's enrollment projections. You've heard some preliminary information. He has a few updates this morning, and we'll be open to questions. Um, before we then start, again, we're, as, uh, Ms. Frazier said yesterday, scaffolding. You heard, we want to always keep students at the center of our work and of our thoughts. And I, you know, I love the work that we're going to do on, um, IDEA, the new IDEA. I'm looking forward to that, so thank you so much. Uh, Mr. Jackson's will respond this morning to, um, the questions that we received about enrollment, projections, and trends. And that'll be followed by a course, which is Impacted, uh, Long Range Planning for Facilities. Thank you, Mr. Jackson.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning, sir.
I will actually try to be brief because we do have some visitors with us. And so, I'm going to try to run through my presentation so they can come up. Um, really, this is pretty much a highlight from some earlier presentations and information you received. I believe at the last board meeting, you received some information on the number of new students that we have in district. This was, uh, this is updated as of August the fifteenth. Uh, we currently have about, um, four thousand two hundred and seventy students. Um, we may have picked up some more, but as you can see, most of those have never attended school before. Those are pretty much our, our kindergartens, and our first graders are, are little ones. Um, it's good to see that we have about two hundred and fifty-eight students that have tri- transferred from private schools, uh, and five sixty-two from other schools within Georgia, and seven hundred and eighty from another state. Uh, someone asked earlier, what about the number of students that have left the district, possibly? Um, talking to Dave this morning, um, right now, it's about maybe half that number of students that have left the district for whatever reason. We will gather that information, um, because it's really, right now, it's a moving target. So, we'll gather that information and get that to the board at a later date. Um, a lot of it, we gather around when we start doing the FTE counts and students. Sometimes we know they left the district, but we don't really know where they are. So, they show up when we start doing the FTE counts at other school districts after reporting. So, we will get that information to you. Um, and this number is just, again, this slide is just the presentation by grade. And like I said earlier, most of the students are the, are the babies that we have coming into the school district. Talk a little bit about our enrollment projections, um, as of tenth day, which was what we consider our, our official enrollment count. That's the enrollment count that we use to start moving staff around, um, at particular schools based upon their enrollment. The, at the elementary level, um, we did have more students than we initially projected. Um, at the sixteen thousand two eighty-five, where we projected the fifteen thousand nine sixty-eight. So, we, we do, we always do well in elementary schools. Middle schools has this trend, and it's, I honestly can say probably as long as I've been in the district, it's, it's always been like this. We lose students in the, in the middle schools for some reason. It did go up for a few years higher than our projections. Now, it's starting to go back down. Um, so, we're, we were a little off with our projections there. Overall, in our projections, um, in total, we try to get total projections within one percent. Um, of the projections, we hope their actual enrollment numbers come in within one percent. It's good to see that at the high school level, we are picking up students there, um, and that has been the trend in recent years. We, hopefully, that trend will continue. Um, seems like we possibly, I think in the past, we've actually picked up some schools, I mean, students from, from private schools. They'll start in private schools in their early years, and they'll come to the public schools later on. Um, so, we hope that trend continues. Then, overall, total enrollment, we're above where we projected, uh, for the tenth day. We projected thirty, thirty-five thousand nine eighteen. Uh, we actually have thirty-six thousand and sixty students. I think it's, it's a hundred and thirty-two students more than what we projected. Um, a hundred and forty-two more than what we projected. And just thirty-seven students more than what we had last year at, at our official enrollment count, which is, which is good for now because it's still, I mean, it's not going down as we projected as much. It's stable right now. Hopefully, we should get some more students between now and, uh, Labor Day. Unfortunately, you know, in our district, we will pick up some students after Labor Day. Because parents realize, as long as your kid doesn't show up to school, he's not absent. So, they will show up between now and right after Labor Day. So, we probably will pick up some more students right after Labor Day. We're, we're between now and that period. You have a handout that's separate, it looks like a spreadsheet. I just didn't want to put all that information into a PowerPoint and break it up. Uh, someone asked a question about choice in schools and, and enrollment. But, um, that's what, that's the detail of this particular slide. This slide is not in your handout, your presentation handout that you received. This slide was added about, um, a few minutes ago. Um, so, it's not in your presentation. But in total, where we had about thirty-eight hundred kids in the choice program, in twenty-twenty, we're down to about, I think, twenty-six hundred, I mean, thirty-six hundred, um, for this year. And that, and that spreadsheet, it shows you the, the number of applications, total number of eligible students, the seats, the number of kids that are seated, and there's a column, third column from the right, which is percentage field. And along with the waitlisted and registered students. So, this is just given to you as some information, I, because a couple of you requested it. So, this is just the information, and we can probably talk about this later on. But we just wanted to make sure that you had the information as of today. We deal with forecasting and doing enrollment overall, in total population. Like I said, we try to get within that one percent of our total students that actually show up. Um, we use enrollment trends, we look at historical data for the last. We use enrollment trends, we look at historical data for the last, we look at the last ten years. Chatham County is really hard to predict the number of kids that may show up or that may move into the district. Unfortunately, we're not a district that has a lot of new companies that are moving into Chatham County. And normally, that's what kids will follow, their parents that will follow those new jobs. Savannah, as you know, is a, a tourist town, a tourist county. Um, so our county is getting older. We're receiving more people, more people are moving here, but it's more retirees and people that are just relocating from up north, but they're not bringing kids with them, unfortunately. So our, our student population has been stable, and now we're starting to see a, a slow decline. One of the things that we look at, that we know the enrollment trend follows, is the birth rates. And that information, we look at from year to year, but there's a slide later on where we show birth rates in Chatham County has declined, um, in two thousand sixteen. On, so normally, our student population pretty much follows that same trend. Thus, we have our projected enrollment up through twenty-twenty-five. Start out with the two last years, uh, the tenth day of this year. But we, we are projecting a, a little decline in enrollment for the next couple of years. And again, we look at, on the finance side, we look at the total enrollment and not, not so much enrollment at every school. We try to, we try to work with the principals and, um, the teachers at that particular school. We try to get a feel for what's going on in that community, are kids moving from one school to another. A lot of kids, our parents are moving from mid, in-town out to west Chatham. So we try to follow the kids as much as we can. But the operations side, they look at the information a little more than what we do. As far as on our end, we know, okay, the, the teachers are going to follow the kids. If the kids show up out of particular school, okay, we're going to move resources to the particular schools. Unfortunately, we get the information counter after, after the fact, but we make adjustments right af, right after tenth day. But the operations side has the hard job of trying to figure out, okay, where do we need schools in the future? Class sizes, facility usage, they're going to talk about that, but they have that hard job of trying to predict where kids are going to show up in the future. I mentioned this earlier about the birth rates. Um, as you can see, from, starting in two thousand fourteen, the birth rates in the county started to go down. A little peak in two thousand nineteen, but it's a big drop from where it was back in two thousand eleven through two thousand and fourteen. And we also looked at the private school enrollment, um, basically from two thousand eighteen through two thousand twenty-two. Slight increase, but nothing drastic, nothing alarming, um, where we actually, we felt we were losing students. As you know, in Chatham County, students that go to private schools are normally, um, students that where their parents went to private schools and their grandparents went, went to private schools. So they're not really students that really leave us and go to private schools. But in Savannah, that has been, been the trend. Any questions regarding the presentation, Mr. Cashmore?
Um, thanks for the presentation. I would say I think we lost some kids to private school because they wanted in-person school all the time. We were, we took a more cautious approach with COVID. But I know some of those families have come back.
Right.
Some have stayed because they don't want to disrupt their kids again. I look at that as a short-term, not a long-term issue. I had a question about the, the data. I, I'm with you, since I've been on the board, we've had this decline in enrollment in middle school. Julie Wade's big thing was, let's make middle school great, and we've taken a lot of strides towards that. Looking at the data, um, do we know if the decline in enrollment from five to six is consistent with K-8 schools and our elementary to middle? And that, because it seems like a lot of kids, not a lot, some kids leave after fifth grade and then come back for ninth grade. And I'd be interested if they come back to our regular zone schools, if they're going to Savannah Arts or Jenkins Engineering or Beach Medical, et cetera. But when we set up K-8 a few years ago, part of the discussion was, let's see if this impacts retention. So I'd be interested to see if the decline from five to six is consistent with K-8s or if that factor is a little different.
Okay. Um, I would give with Dave and his team to see if we can put that information, um, to see if we can, see if there's a trend between the K-8 schools and regular elementary schools when, when those kids leave us, at least at the middle grade level.
Yes. Is there a report that shows student enrollment slash school capacity for each school? And the reason why I'm asking is due to the growth on the west side of town, just to see what those buildings look like and see, you know, just how many students are in those buildings.
I'm not sure if, um, Ms. Mel Kell, you're going to have to send a packet? Yeah. So they're going to address that later on. Like I said, they, they really work on looking at the capacity and, and trying to project how many kids are going to show up. They, we know who's there now, but what will the trend be in the next year or two? Are we still going to lose kids at a school that's, you know, that's losing students? Who's next?
I would sort of follow up on Mr. Cashmore, uh, the K-8. I mean, I think in some of our new-built K-8s, we have intentionally made sure that the facilities there equal middle school facilities. Georgetown was a retrofit, and I know in my community, a lot of the parents are trying to find a traditional middle school because it doesn't have the middle school facilities and offerings that their student could get at any of the other just six to eight. Rather, not even looking at just, you know, a, a specialty program, they're just looking for, can my kid actually play all the sports? Because they can't do all of those at Georgetown K-8 because the school is just kind of like, oh, we're just going to make this way in middle school. So I, I would ask facilities, and we'll probably talk about it some, in some of those K-8s where we just flip middle, elementaries to K-8s, if we have funding allocated in E4 to look at trying to upgrade facilities so that those six through eight, that the K-8s actually have some similar structures that our other middle schools offer so that they aren't going, hmm, I don't have what I, you know, that's, that's, that's an elementary gym. We can't even have a, a middle school basketball game in there because, yes, whatever, the sports won't allow it. So.
I feel like I've, I've hit a nerve.
Do you have a response? We're going, you want to respond now or respond later?
He is correct. He did that enough. No, I just, and, and we'll be coming behind us since we're at the discussion stage. I'll go ahead and bring that up. Um, we can form what we're, kind of, as a working group, collaboratively with our academic teams, with facilities, with capital projects. For that reason, we've done a lot of retrofitting back in the day. We'll just take the elementary school and turn it into a middle school. So we want to make sure we're right-sized and having all of the offerings. And a part of long-term and long-range planning is just what you said. What is the future? What does it look like? And what will those futures be? So you'll see it here more about the collaboration between the academic group and the capital and the facilities group to make sure that we're making, making those right decisions strategically across the district.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Johnson, I'll start with you. Come up.
Um, I appreciate the report. Uh, one thing that I think would also be very interesting to see, if we could find the data and get the data, if it's, if from that's accurate, is what are the, where are the private schools at a capacity? What kind of waitlist do they have? Because if they have, if they do have waitlists that are significant, that means that we, there are families that are looking to leave the public schools to go to the, the private schools that they don't have room for. If there was a way we could get that information, I think that would also be useful to us as well.
From the private schools?
Yeah.
Okay. Ms. Hall.
Just to Ms. Kaitler, we have the privilege right now of having a K-8 with Pulaski that, um, you know, so I'm sure that later on we'll be talking about that. But to me, that's a great idea in terms of seeing what are we doing differently when we have the, um, capacity to actually add a new addition on as opposed to taking, say, a East Broad and making it into a K-8. We actually are constructing, uh, an additional K-8, you know, making the six-eight additional. So that'll be very interesting, um, to see that. And in terms of Mr. Johnson's, this whole thing about the private school, to me, that has so much to do with what we were just talking about outside. Uh, lots of parents get very scared when their children reach puberty. And they think, well, I better make some changes here because, you know, I don't want all of that intermingling and, you know, I won't go deeper into that. There are lots of reasons that are not positive that people may choose to go to a private school. And, um, lots of times, it's the finances that bring them back. And so, um, I don't want us to concentrate too much on being afraid because people may even go to private school.
Okay. Dr. Buck?
Uh, I did, I wanted to, um, to look at the choice program handout that we got, and it's, um, it seems to me that with choice programs, you know, we went through this period a few years ago, everybody needs a choice program, and it didn't work, and they didn't really have choice programs, et cetera, et cetera. But if you look at the, the data shown here, um, I'm not really concerned that there's a five people waiting on a short list for acceptance in some of the choice programs. I am, uh, sort of concerned and titillated by the fact that Garrison has a three hundred and eighty-five student waiting list. And perhaps that's, to get into Savannah Arts, maybe?
Yes.
Part of the reason?
Yes.
Right. But I do not think that is the only reason. I think Garrison's STEAM program, if you will, where the arts are included as part of everything else, is a very good, it's a beautiful school, et cetera, et cetera. I'm saying that because then in one of our newest, biggest, finest schools, we have fifty-one people on the waiting list in engineering at Jenkins. And Lord knows, I don't really care if we've got five people on the waiting list in avionics because I don't think the demand in, outside is as great. But when you're talking about engineering in this city, it's no different from logistics. We ought to be finding teachers and all to get those fifty-one students into an engineering program at Jenkins. Uh, because that's a service that, to me, helps students find that future, Denise, that they are looking for.
Doc House, come on.
Thank you. My question, well, my original comment was about the figure on the enrollment projections for, um, private schools, and it has the total private school enrollment. Um, my suggestion was that we don't look at their total enrollment. We don't care about their enrollment. Um, what we're really wanting to see is the change and whether the change in their enrollment is something that is saying something about us. And we're not, excuse me, and we're not getting that from totals. And, uh, Mr. Johnson's comment made me think of something that we need to kind of silence this issue of what we think is happening with private school enrollment. Don't really care about their waiting list, don't care about what's happening with their enrollment, except that is there a significant change in their enrollment that is different than what we would see over twenty years? So this is a statistical request, a distinct statistical request. I would like for us to look, have, look at the twenty years of enrollment, calculate delta, the change in enrollment from year to year for twenty years, and get a ninety-five percent confidence interval. If we don't see a change that is outside that, that interval in the future, we don't have to be talking about it because that's just natural variability in their enrollment. If we see something that is really statistically significant at any time, whether it's right now or ten years from now, then we know something is happening in the enrollment with private schools that is beyond natural issues. And as Ms. Hall said, I mean, I know people who have very physically curious middle schoolers and put them in private school because they needed some nuns to make sure that they were paying attention to them. It had nothing to do about, you know, you know, economics. Sometimes it is race, sometimes it's economics, sometimes you just want some nuns and some pastors and some priests around that person. So I, those, those reasons of being on these waiting lists, I think it, it is good information if you want to know that. But I think as a board, we're looking at private school enrollment. We want to know, is something that we did so different that is beyond the normal that we need to pay attention to, not what's happening year to year with private schools?
Yeah. Then excluding the last couple of years, which are kind of outlined.
Yeah. And when we do that, we may even find that those aren't even statistically significant. Maybe one, right now, one of them looks like it may be, but one of the years of the pandemic does not look like it might be.
Correct. Ms. Moss?
So, um, all right, all right. I'm sitting in a weird place. So, um, I'm going to really parse my words here. What I'm trying to say is we've got to get, we got to get away from public and private schools. We're talking about children. And we're talking about parents making decisions. During the pandemic, I sat down with plenty of parents who are the biggest supporter of public schools known to man. But they felt that they had to make that decision for their children. The reason that people choose private school, a lot, a lot of the parents that I know that have chosen private school has nothing to do with race, has nothing to do with, I don't want my children around certain children. They were looking out for their children. I said this before, our school system is our school system, and we've got to look out for our children and let parents make those decisions. And let's not assume anything about any parents. You don't want anyone to assume anything about you. Do not assume anything about these parents. Thanks.
Um, Mr. Cashmore, and I know we need to hurry up because I know operations has a lot of stuff to bring.
I just have a question about this choice program data. So like AB Williams, it says there's fifty-five seats available, fifty-five are filled, fifty-five seated, but then we've got fifty-one registered and twenty-three waitlisted. And then it says a hundred percent filled. So I'm trying to determine, like, for example, uh, Jenkins Engineering, we've got eighty-five seats, eighty-three seated, and then it says eighty-five registered and fifty-one waitlisted. So why would we have anybody waitlisted if we have less than total capacity seated? That's kind of what I'm asking. Make sense?
It makes sense, and...
Yeah, some of that could be attributed to the grade level. So the seats could be available at different grade levels, or capacity could be filled at different grade levels.
Yeah, so Island Vet Science, seventy-five capacity, only fifty-one seated. So those are maybe, they're trying to get in in tenth grade or eleventh grade and just don't have access. Okay.
So that's a good example of something that hopefully we could control and get that, where that, they could go, just like what Dr. Buck was talking about.
You only have one of your teachers.
Yeah.
Right.
There you go. So that would be a difference there.
Yeah. I hear you.
The one column that is not shown on here that I would like to see is the total number of seats, um, that are available in that program, not just the new students coming in. And the reason for that is, in looking at our budget books over the past several years, the number of seats total in some of our choice programs, especially, and we have like six choice programs that are ninety-eight to a hundred percent full, but the total number of seats projected in our budget book year to year keeps dropping. And that was my question. If we have these incredibly successful choice programs that are bringing in students and bringing in the funding to those students, why are we dropping the number of seats that are projected in those choice programs?
I think there's several factors that we have to look at, and I would like to, uh, charge Mr. Feliciano and Mrs. Ball Oliver with, uh, talking with those principals to see, it could be based on, um...
principals to see, it could be based on a special, a teacher with special skill that needs to be able to teach a certain number of students. It could be related to a number of factors. But I think it warrants taking a look at it. We have specifically received complaints about Jenkins and their limits on the number of students. And have had extensive conversations with the principal and the staff about not wanting to take more students. We've always had the concerns also with culinary, which is why we have a second culinary program. We also have engineering programs in other places outside of Jenkins as well, which we have also filled those programs with students who are very happy to be in another engineering program. So I think one of the things that this points to is a refresher on where the programs are and who's in those programs, but also taking a look at what is it that calls for a change in the numbers, either increase or decrease.
Mr. Jackson, I just want to not rebut Mr. Moss, but just say that the people who need to hear that are the public. Because we sat there and had to listen to how, because of our failings, we have children going to private school, we have children going to Effingham County, Bryan County, you know, everywhere. So to me, if the public could be more aware that private schools are in existence because parents have decided that's where they want their children to go and nothing else, I think if the public had more awareness of that, then that would make our lives much easier. But for right now, the public seems to think the more kids who go to private school, that's sustained on the public school system.
And you can't, you can't ignore also the increasing access to vouchers. Because frankly, I'm just going to tell you, I was born here, and I recognize the history associated with some private schools. When you look at the number of dollars going into those private schools, then vouchers have been a way for some to continue to operate. So we can't ignore that as well. And I do think that's something that should be noted. You can doubt the veracity of it, but for those of us who've been around for a while, we understand the impact of those. And I, I have two children. I think you should make the decision, it's in the best interest of your children. I think it's also incumbent upon each of us to recognize that people make decisions for whatever reason they want to make them. I say to everybody, make a decision about what's best for your child. The bottom line is, we don't care what kind of school it is, we just want it to be a good school. We want children to have a good experience. Our job is to preserve public education because I don't care how many private schools you have, you are still going to need public education. Our job is to make sure that we continue to improve.
May I add?
Mr. Cashmar?
Just one real quick. We added another culinary program. For years and years and years in a row, we've had a huge waiting list at Garrison. Maybe we should think about duplicating that somewhere else in the district.
Okay.
Correct.
All right. Well, thank you all for your input and your questions. Just for information, I'm going to ask Kurt to remind me to send you all information on these supplements. I know, as we're bouncing, you asked about that earlier. We worked on that earlier during the spring. We actually have been working on it last probably a year, year and a half or so with academic affairs and HR. So we did, we revised that, we included some academic council, I mean, not councils, but leaders within the, on the academic side. So we have academic supplements also to go along with the sporting supplements. But we will get that information to you all.
Great. Clubs is the one that seems to be...
Yes, yeah, we include those. All right, thank you all.
All right. Thank you.
Ms. Miller-Kegler has been waiting patiently to talk with you about the questions that you put forward about long-range planning. The last time we were in this room, we had an opportunity to share some information with you, with our partners from Parsons. So I'm going to invite her to come forward and not only introduce them, I know we have, you're working on it, Dave, Ms. Miller-Kegler.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you. And the dedication, Dave, when I said a discussion thus far, it's been meaningful and good for us because again, I'll tell you how important it is for operations to be able to support the academic needs. And I'm going to tell you a quick story as we get Simi and Sam ready to come up. They're our partners relative to our long-term planning, our long-range planning, a part of the Parsons Group. And we're talking about the additional culinary program and kind of the East Side Woodville. It was as a direct result of us preparing the ESPLASH list for E3. Dr. LeVett was a deputy, I was a deputy, or we were, whatever our titles were at the time. And having an understanding of what was the next steps and what were the upcoming needs. So we were able to add that to the ESPLASH list and be able to fund it. So you're going to hear us talk about what those needs are, what those long-term needs, those short-term needs, and how we fund it. Once we submit that referendum, and Lee can correct me, that is set. We have become a little more savvy in our language in the referendum. But once that is voted approved by the board and by the voters, then we are required to adhere to that. So any other program enhancements, major renovations, are then the responsibility of the general fund. So make sure as we start having those conversations today, you'll hear the need. So we have Simi up now, Dave, we're ready. I'm going to ask Sam to come up. We have quite a few areas we're going to cover today. We're going to start with the long-range plan. Everybody know what their time is. And we're going to talk about capacity. That's going to be important. But you know what, can I say, can I have a half a minute? When I got back to the office yesterday, my staff was having a courageous conversation that I was categorized as being a bully. And I went home and I was upset. But you know what? I am. Because I want the kids to get to school on time. I want the lunch to be prepared the way it's supposed to be. I want the buildings clean. I want the money to be in order because we manage a lot of money. So in essence, you know what? I am one. Because I want you to want what I want. And that every child that walks into a school and walk out of a building, they are educated. So I'm an education bully. So whoever referred to me as a bully, I'm an education bully.
Thank you, Ms. Miller-Kegler. And good morning or is it good afternoon already? Superintendent Levitt, Dr. Buck, members of the board. Dr. Simi Rayford and I are thrilled to be here again with you today to brief you on the long-range facilities plan effort. And as we are embarking on a very intensive period in the project schedule, I've been asked to go kind of quick.
Could he introduce himself, sir?
I, yes, ma'am. My name is Sam Mandola. I have managed facility assessment, planning, and master planning projects for Parsons for the last 15 years for K-12 school districts across the country, including many here in Georgia. My company has served as, served the district since 2013, providing construction management services in support of the ESPLASH programs. Many of you may know Bill Huttigam. We've also performed previous facility assessment and planning project with MGT Consulting Group in 2015 and 16, and a security and safety of safer schools assessment in 2018. And my colleague, Dr. Simi Rayford, could not join us today for personal reasons, but she's here virtually, and we are going to bring her in to introduce herself. Simi?
And good morning, everyone. My name's Dr. Simi. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Wonderful. Well, again, my name's Dr. Simi Rayford, Vice President of Educational Solutions for MGT. My apologies, as Sam mentioned, I have a family emergency. So I'm sitting here at UF Health in Jacksonville right now with a family member that had to go into surgery, but through the magic of technology, I'm joining you virtually. As Sam mentioned, like Sam, we've had the pleasure of working with educational adequacy as a part of long-range facilities planning for school districts around the country for a number of years and for about, oh, Sam, you can check me, but at least a decade or so, we have been partners on a number of those projects. And so much of what I've been listening to this morning so far, as you talked about enrollment, as you talked about issues with children coming back feeling very disengaged, these are the kinds of things that we're hearing all over the country and that are have to be first and foremost as schools and school systems move forward with their long-range planning. So today, Sam and I will talk about it from our perspective and the work that we are looking forward to doing for you there in Savannah. So again, my apologies for not being there in person, but I'm so glad that I could join you virtually. Sam?
Thanks, Simi. So real quick, our agenda here is go through the goals and objectives for the long-range facilities plan, the issues and challenges, and pass forward that we derived quite a bit from the diagnostic assessment that we did earlier in the year, our conversations with the superintendent and other district administrators over the past number of months, and of course, Ms. Kegler and Mr. Bozeman back there. We're going to go over the project timeline because, as I mentioned, we are now in a very intensive phase of this project where we're going to be conducting the condition assessments and the educational adequacy assessments at the individual schools and meeting with the principals who've already been engaged. So earlier this year, the district asked Parsons and MGT to perform an updated facilities assessment and planning services in response to the board policy for long-range facilities planning and optimization of district facilities. You'll recall, we kicked the project off with the diagnostic assessment where we interviewed Dr. Levitt and 15 administrators, as I mentioned. And through those interviews, Parsons and our partner, MGT, were able to gain significant details and meaningful insights into the current successes and challenges and opportunities in each area of district operations. And in further slides, we're going to recap the diagnostic themes and discuss the next steps, but I will turn it over to Simi to discuss the goals and objectives in the next several slides.
Thanks, Sam. So as Sam mentioned, and Sam, I'm not seeing the slides as on share, but I do have them in front of me. So I'm going to go on to slide number four, the diagnostic assessment themes. So as Sam mentioned, we were there this spring and had the great good fortune to meet with central office staff. And hopefully, as you see there on the screen in front of you, is a summary of some of the themes that emerged on the strengths and successes. The top three themes that we saw was that the district had experienced tremendous success with graduation rate that now exceeds the state average. The district is in a very enviable position from many districts of having strong financial health at this point and also enjoying strong partnerships with businesses and with the local community. Among the challenges at that time, we found that growth is happening in the part of the district where currently schools don't exist. So that has great implications for long-range facilities plans. And then also, there are some utilized, underutilized facilities that present additional cost to the system and personnel shortages, bus drivers, teachers, and so forth. This is certainly, this last challenge is one that has certainly been exacerbated due to COVID headlines across the country this week as schools open led with teacher shortages, bus driver shortages in my own home district in Duval County in Jacksonville. Those have definitely been our headlines as we face severe shortcomings in terms of workers with transportation. So the challenges that you face are not unique, and yet the solutions to them have to be unique and customized to your location. Next slide, please, Sam. On the next slide, I'll just briefly and just speak about more broadly some of the context within which schools operate today, particularly as it relates to facilities and academics. And on the next slide, I'm going to talk about some of the research that's been done to show the connection between those two things. But all of us who have grandparents, we can remember them talking about how schools were in their day. And that in the last century, desks were actually bolted to the floor, single rows, a chalkboard board in front of the room, and it was a very fixed configuration to the rooms. Every room was built, almost, schools were almost built on a factory model where all the sizes were indistinguishable and the rooms were distinguishable from one another. That is not the model of learning today. Today, the emphasis is on having flexible spaces that can adjust a varying sizes of classes as well as varying styles of instruction. Post-COVID, one of the, two of the biggest things that we hear all the time in terms of school design is making sure there's lots of fresh air circulation throughout the building. And so that puts a demand on HVAC systems as well as making sure that there is sufficient lighting throughout the building. So those two things have had a tremendous impact on how we look at schools that are future-focused. And then technology, again, during the, when we were completely shut down, school systems that already had one-on-one initiatives or other technology that could be quickly scaled up and out to the home use were at a much greater advantage than schools that did not have the funding or the infrastructure for that. All of that ties back to academics and the, and sort of a question that has to be faced by all of us, what is the best structure for students and teachers and what is the best learning environment moving forward for teaching and learning to be optimized? Next slide. So some of the things that we began to look at was to see if there has been recent research on the connection between facilities and academics, and we found a good deal. First, there's a growing body of research that shows a relationship between the quality of that school building and student achievement. And very specific and significant correlations have been found between student learning and academic achievement that is at a low level and those students being housed in buildings that are in poor structural, conditional, or aesthetic condition. Next slide, please. When we looked at this a little further in terms of the research on the connection, we found that substandard physical learning environments were strongly associated with truancy and other behavioral problems. So they found that it wasn't just academics and that student achievement scores tended to decrease as building ages, research showing as high as 5% depending on other maintenance factors. So in other words, if you have old buildings and those old buildings are not being maintained up to a certain standard, research has shown that that correlates directly with lower performance scores. A very large-scale study was done in one of the nation's largest school systems, LAF Unified, and it showed that the school's compliance with health and safety standards could lead on average to a 36% increase in their state assessments. So California is one of the places where we saw the strongest connection. Next slide, please. What we also know from the U.S. Department of Education, they say that the students are better able to learn and remain engaged with instruction in classrooms that are well-lit, clean, spacious, and heated and air-conditioned as needed. So there's no freezing in bake rooms, there are rooms that are pocket-controlled throughout the year. Also, learning was negatively affected when the reverse was true, with rooms were too hot or too cold or poorly ventilated. And this affected both teachers and students and had an effect on both retention of teachers and retention of students. Next slide. So what's our takeaway from the research? Quality school buildings, according to the research, do contribute to student achievement when they, with the configurations that we see on the slide. First, to make sure that lighting and air quality are of standard because they do directly impact learning. Spaces need to be inviting, and spaces being invited communicate that there is a value to education, that the community has made the investment in their schools so that the schools are not only well-maintained, but in instances... but in instances where they are in a condition that they need to be completely renovated or replaced, that's happening. And they provide reassurances to the students and to the community that they're safe and secure. And unfortunately, we all have seen the headlines revolving that the Sandy Hook and so many things in between, that safety for many communities is, if not D-factor, then one of the key factors that they make assessments about the quality of schools and whether or not they put their children in schools. So all of those physical, conditional factors of buildings have a direct impact on learning, behavior, student and teacher retention. So with that, I'm going to go on to have Sam pick up the next slide and talk a little bit about the project scope.
So, what the district has tasked Parsons and MGT to do is what we really call a comprehensive facility assessment and planning exercise, where we're not just looking at the condition or even, as Simi described, the educational suitability or adequacy of the buildings, you know, in comparison, for example, to, you know, your design standards or your educational standards. We are doing those things as we typically do those things in a, in a standard assessment and planning project. But as I mentioned earlier, you can see here the eight, the eight major scope items. We started with that diagnostic assessment, which started with the, the interview of Dr. Levitt and the district administrators that we've collected this information. And we spent a great deal of time in the spring after we collected this and met with all of you to develop the scope of this program that we're undertaking right now. We're taking it on right now because, obviously, there's teachers, the principals, everyone's back in school. You had some new principals come in that left, you know, at the, at the end of the previous school that they're in now, that are acclimating to the classroom environment, the campus environment, that we're going to be interviewing as well, as part of that. So, as I mentioned, we are starting a very intensive period right now in the program now that school is back and we're going to be engaging all of the principals and staff in your, your, your board districts. So, we always collect a lot of, a lot of information from the districts when we take on these, these, these projects. And Mr. Jackson pointed out or presented to us the enrollment projections. That is going to be incorporated into this assessment as well as capacity and utilization. That's also been discussed, which, which schools, which campuses are overutilized, underutilized, the ones that have the waiting list. I noticed the, one of the documents that Mr. Jackson presented had a few school campuses that were underutilized in the 30%, 40% area there. So we're going to be examining that as well, as well as the demographics as well. And scenario building, what does all this mean? Well, when we, when we met with you during the diagnostic assessment, it wasn't the study, it wasn't just the campuses, it was a much larger operationally from food service, transportation, IT at the district level that's going to be examined as well. It's being examined as part of this assessment project. And this is all going to culminate in the long-range facilities plan per the, per the board policy. And I'll show you the schedule here. You'll see August, September, very packed, very packed with the assessments that I mentioned, the analysis of the demographics and enrollments, capacity utilization, the different reports that we're going to produce and review with you. And the final is looking like, in the, the final result of this is looking like in the December, January time period for its, its publication. I'm going to ask Simi to speak real fast for the, on the subject of the educational adequacy that's been touched on a little bit already.
Thanks, Sam. So, as I mentioned earlier, when I was talking about some of the research around that connection between school facility condition and also academics, and then as we look towards the future, one of the terms that we're hearing more and more is future-ready, having buildings that really meet the needs of learners in this current era. And so, with that, we use, we develop an educational adequacy guide to make sure that the spaces in the buildings are focused in terms of their design, in terms of the flexibility of their use. And also, again, when we talked about having that good HVAC airflow, having comfortable temperatures throughout the building because we know the contributions those make, not only to learning, but again, in the aftermath of COVID, that has become one of, excuse me, is that there is adequate air conditioning and airflow throughout the building. Also, an emphasis on outdoor spaces. That has always been somewhat of a part of a facility review, but again, as we look toward those future-ready spaces, that is becoming even more to the forefront. And as we look at school designs around the country, we see more and more of an inclusion of those types of spaces. So, Sam, if you could go with the next slide. As, as Sam showed on the timeline, August and September are going to be very busy. And we have tentatively slated the week of September, the 10th, we come in on that Monday to do our orientation, and then, starting on that Tuesday through Friday, with the sample schedule that you see on the screen. This, we work collaboratively. For example, there may be things happening at a particular school, and they'll say, for example, we have poolers there at 8:00 on the 11th, but it might work better for them to slot them into, we have an open slot at 11 on Friday. So, we communicate our schedule out to school administrators to make sure that we can get a time that is most convenient to them. Our assessors will go in and begin the process with a conversation with the administrators to let them know the kinds of things that we'd be looking for and to ask questions about some things that we will need to know right before we begin our walk through the school to let the principal know certain look-for's so that they can point those out as we walk through. So, for example, one of the things that I mentioned earlier that is a true hallmark of learning today is having robust technology in place. And so, we look at things like server rooms to make sure that there is enough capacity to have adequate strength of signal and bandwidth throughout the building for learning to happen wirelessly throughout the school day and beyond. So, with that schedule, then, we walk the school. It takes us, depending on the size of the school, anywhere from about an hour to two hours with a high school with a very large facility. But the importance there is that we are walking the building with someone, and it typically is the principal or assistant principal. In other instances, if those individuals are new to the building and there may be curriculum specialists or guidance cops or someone else who has a long history with the building and can really speak to the spaces, those are the types of individuals that we like to walk with us so that we can have a really robust conversation about the types of things that we're looking for in the building. And with that, I'm going to pass it back to Sam and have him talk about the schedule for the facility condition assessments.
So, we've also produced a facility assessment schedule. It's just for the condition of the buildings that would be inspected by architects, engineers, and construction professionals of different disciplines. Very similar to what Simi said, but I'd just add that here, as in Simi's, the schedules are based on geography and how much square foot area our assessment teams can cover in a day and in a week. So, we're not going from one end of town to the next, for example. The, the schedules that Simi and I just presented have been distributed to the principals, and they're flexible. Our assessment team leads are going to be speaking with the principals, and, you know, if something needs to change, we'll adjust the schedules accordingly. But you can see, it's, it's pretty jam-packed from the standpoint, but we will be spending between four, six, eight hours in each facility. It takes considerably more time. But we also provide questionnaires to the principals or administrators to complete prior to our arrival, and we have in-briefs and debriefs with these administrators on our way in and out of the facilities. So, with that, I tried, we tried to keep it as short as we could. Any questions? Yes, sir.
When you give a facility a rating, like in the past, we had red and yellow. Are you using company ratings, state of Georgia guidelines for giving us ratings? Like, what do we compare them to?
We can compare them to whatever the district agrees to from that standpoint, whether it's state grading scale, whether it's Parsons, you know, national experience, which we can make recommendations based on, or other building standards from the standpoint of rating. But we do rate the facilities from a comparative analysis standpoint, giving them what's called a facility condition index score.
Right, which we've seen before, but like, the state will give us entitlement funds for some facilities, but not others. So I just, I just want to make sure through this process, when we, when we get indexes, scores, that they're aligned to what we did previously so that it shows continuity, but also aligned with our ability to maximize revenue from the state.
Correct. And, yes, sir, the, the software, the database that we created that has your current facility condition data in it is going to be updated from that standpoint. We can revisit the, the scoring, the scale that we're talking about here from the standpoint, but there is benefits, obviously, to comparing it to the baseline, which is what was produced in 2015, 16. And the, the software and the database that we've created is also configured such for the Georgia DOE reporting upward. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much for the presentation. I am thrilled to hear the recognition of the importance of daylight, fresh air, outdoor learning opportunities in 21st century presence. I think that's so critical, so I'm thrilled to be looking at that. Two questions. Are you looking at facility, some of our vacant or facilities that are not, like, I think, like Mercer, for example, is that included in this analysis so we understand our full inventory? Or is it really focused on occupancies?
The, the condition assessment, as well as the adequacy, is based on different levels of assessment, depending on kind of what you're talking about, whether it's vacant or whether it's an active school from that standpoint. The vacant schools can be included in the assessment, as we do that quite frequently from the standpoint of, you know, the total portfolio outlook. And, you know, districts look at things like that from divestiture standpoint, repurposing standpoint. We, we do that, but from this particular job standpoint, we're looking at active schools primarily and ones that are older.
And second question is, are you looking at the actual campus in itself and a particular connectivity? And I realize connectivity goes off the campus, but I think as part of this inventory, it would be really helpful for us to identify whether we have challenges for students to be able to walk and bike to school, so connectivity to neighborhood by walks, if it's possible, and I don't want to get into this.
Sam, I thought I heard a question about connectivity which would fall under our adequacy, but I could not hear the entire question.
Oh, yes. So, yes, ma'am, my question was about connectivity for sidewalks and as related to our schools, accessibility for safe routes to schools for our students. And, Sam?
It's still dropping out. David, could you repeat the question for me? I think I can hear through your lines.
Restate the question? The board member was talking about connectivity to the community from the standpoint of bicycles.
Of sidewalks.
Of sidewalks. Biking trails to the, to the school campuses.
Yes, that is one of the under-outdoor spaces. That's one of the things that we look for, that we specify as safe ways to walk. So, for example, there are some schools that are tucked away in suburban neighborhoods with sidewalks leading right up to them. Other spaces have, are right off of major and very, very busy streets. And so, that is one of the things that we look for, our safe walk paths from the community to the school.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Sam?
Interestingly, bicycles used to be, probably a decade ago, lots of kids riding bicycles. And just anecdotally, I have not had bike riders at school in the last five years. It's been, it's been interesting to see how that has just declined in urban and suburban systems.
I wanted you to speak for a minute about what your concept, future-ready, what that entails.
Okay. Simi?
What is future-ready? What does future-ready entail?
That is an emphasis on several factors. One, technology throughout the building, so you've got robust connectivity, wirelessly throughout the building. You have children bringing devices of their own or you have a one-on-one initiative. So, all of those devices need to have adequate charging. And so, in buildings that are older, there is not enough electrical capacity. So, you have these charging big parts, and sometimes there's not enough power in the wall for that charging part to bump into. So, one is a robust technology structure. The second is having spaces that can be used for different things throughout the day and then reconfiguring even the space that are outside of classrooms. So, for example, one of the things that we're starting to see more of in media centers is media centers are not just places where you go and check out books. There are actually small meeting spaces that can be used just for faculty for planning, but then also can be used for students working on individual assignments. Within classrooms, there are walls that are movable, not like the old ones, but those skip accordion spaces, but walls that can move to expand and contract, walls that can be written on. So, whatever part of the room where learning is happening in large or small groups in that space, it's not just that one whiteboard now, chalkboard at the front of the room. Those types of spaces are located throughout the room. So, the emphasis is on flexibility, technology, and adaptability of spaces throughout the campus, not just in specific areas. Another piece, as I mentioned earlier, are outdoor learning spaces. So, we have, for example, a number of future-ready campuses that have small amphitheaters. So, there are things that are, that students can gather in a terrace-type space on the outside that can include things like tools, agricultural outside of a CTE setting. But at any school level, you have agricultural spaces, you have outdoor gathering spaces for, not just for academics, but also socially. So those are just some of the examples of, when you say future-ready, those are the types of things. Future-ready has become the term that you hear now instead of 21st century because now we are there. So, we can't call 21st the future anymore. So now, we're generic, future-ready.
Thank you, Simi.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Levitt.
Yeah, thanks a lot for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. We appreciate your being here today and certainly thank Simi for joining us in the midst of a family crisis. We're going to take a stretch break. We need about five minutes of stretching. Ms. Mel Kegler is going to come back with the next part of her presentation, but just need you to get up, I'm sure, and just stretch a little bit, and we'll start in about five minutes, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, Ashley. I remembered your Facebook.
Yes.
That's why I actually didn't see it. Thank you. Thank you.
And she and I have some history with this project.
So...
Sam, you're looking at this.
Your husband is just getting, you know...
Yes.
Sure.
We have the right to.
I think the man who... Where he should be prepared. To change careers. In the next year.
Just finishing.
There are a lot of very many other projects that are...
He's a master's in nature. He's working on a doctorate. But he's, since he's on a class now, I picked up after he pitched his research.
You're getting a class, stay where you're at.
I thought the thing was like...
They pay tuition to be there.
Motion show facilities and just taking...
It's like there's a global one. And then there's another one. Okay, so he has a traditional. So, he has a tradition. Between the traditional and the middle one. She has the middle one, the traditional one. It's definitely like 25,000 dollars. Contact yourself. And he's waiting for time. He has a name. So, his name is called Natalie, but it's a woman. He takes a little more study time, more than my, if he don't, if he don't have it on. He gets his mind. So, so he was telling us, he's a traditional man. And I get, and I get my... I would not want to come in.
But it's funny to me, why you all have the... Peter was coming just before my presentation. Nobody's paying any attention.
That means you better keep it.
That should do something.
She was.
All we've done is...
I'm not gonna rock. The bully will not rock.
You're giving us, you're giving us data points now on bullies.
No. What we're talking about is we're gonna have a tab, lunch. No. All right, teacher. I think if you want to get your bag of chips, get you a drink, you have a lot of power.
I mean, we really do. And I want us to make sure, Dr. Buck just gave me that look like. Can we do it by the democratic process? Do you all want to eat now, or eat, let me have my presentation?
Let me have your presentation.
See, thank you.
I know David.
I'm not gonna shorten it.
Good task force, yeah.
So, was that fair?
We're, we're here for the presentation, not food.
Thank you.
Did she just bully us to let her have her... I'm on a...
I'll start worrying in a minute.
I'm on a...
Thank you, I'm gonna start crying in a minute. There's a couple of areas that we, we want to cover, and we, we definitely saw. I, I thank you for the opportunity to be able to cover it and discuss it with you all. Oftentimes, we have informal session, we always have a CIC meeting and board meeting, but in a retreat, it gives us more of an opportunity, more of a dialogue, to talk about exactly what we do in our relationship to instruction. And it's something, a laughing joke, but I take it very seriously, because, and, and for those of you who may have received the message or text, everything is okay at Charles Ellis. There was, there was an issue there, but it was related to one of the HVAC systems. There was a spark, so naturally, they called the fire department. We got the kids in, got them out and got them back in. We have to all clear, okay? So, I just wanted to, to pass that on. So, it kept me alert, kept the team alert while that was occurring. But all is well. We have to all clear, everybody's back in the building. What we're gonna talk about today, and let me introduce the team that I have with me. Darbozman is, is in the back, who's responsible for Capitol Projects and Facilities. Elizabeth Epstein is here with us also. She's in Facilities right next there with me. She worked very closely on helping to develop and putting together our capacity. We're also looking at residential development, how that impact our decision where our students are, and then how we make those decisions moving forward. Because oftentimes, we're here, well, it's time for us to look at purchasing land, and we're going to another side, we're gonna build more schools. But what you're gonna hear us talk about is how we right-size schools. Those schools that are under capacity, that has that trend, it's been under capacity. Those that's overcapacity, how do we relieve them? It's tough when we start talking about redistricting. But when you operate a school, and we had that conversation with one of my colleagues, he said, well, what does right, right-sizeing mean, Vanessa? But the Center for Educational Statistics quote, anything between 90 and 110% is what we should have a school. Anything under, when we look at schools, and we have schools that are consistently at 40 and 50 and 60% of capacity, that is very inefficient. Because we, we do, we do not receive an electric or utility bill for 50% of that building. We operate at 100%. When we walk into buildings in the morning, we turn on all of the power. But we're operating at less than 50%, less than 60%, and less than several, 70% of capacity. We're gonna have to change our thinking, and we're gonna have to change the way that we deliver services. So, we're gonna provide you, I hate to say data, Mr. Ketch, I just called me on the data outside. But we're gonna provide you with the facts of where we are, and we're gonna have to start working very quickly. We're bringing on new schools. We're gonna talk to you a little bit about what happened when we bought New Hampstead High School on, when there were very few families in that area. Very few families. We bought students and families from Beach, from Grove, from Windsor Forest, and Jenkins. And you're gonna see what the capacity of those buildings have been. It has a, what we call a first, second, third order of effect. It has an impact on transportation. Now, how many buses go to New Hampstead High School? 20. 20 buses. So, when I talk about, we talk about facilities, but I look at it in the realm and the sphere of operations. Everything has an impact on it. So, if we are ready to start populating, or looking at how we populate the multi-campus, because I couldn't move them back this year, because they're in alternate sites. But by December, and the good thing is the staff is here, we need to have a plan by December. That's why we have the work group, that we're gonna be working with our academic team. We're gonna be looking at where we have future development. We're gonna be looking at where we have underutilization, where is there overutilization? And ladies and gentlemen, you're gonna have to make those tough decisions. Because you're gonna get the calls from the families, you're gonna get the notes from your neighbors, you're gonna get the little love note from your church member, but we're going, because I get them there. So, we're gonna have to start looking at how we're going to right-size buildings and become more efficient in how we deliver our services. We want to transport more kids. We all do. But we have to have drivers, or we're gonna have to come up with a plan and a program to do that. And that's part of my responsibility, is to provide you with the data as to how we can do that. How we can make sure that schools need to operate efficiently. We're gonna talk a little bit about where we are with, with HVAC systems. We were challenged at the beginning of the school year because of the age of some of those buildings and those systems. We're now talking about what was a new school in E1. That is now a legacy system that will require some attention. So, I kinda just gave you a quick overview of everybody's presentation, but we have kind of three phases of our presentation this morning. I'm gonna do a quick retrospect. We're gonna look back at the start of East Splosh. When we started with E1, and I'm gonna take you quickly up to where we are now and how we function. I have a few of these, I know I've killed a lot of trees, and we did back in front, but...
Eight hundred and ninety-seven slides.
What was that? I know your wife. And she's always giving me permission to call her. She'll get a call this evening. What we, what we did, and what the superintendent tasked us with, and what our Capitol Projects chair did, is we developed a comprehensive staffing plan for Capitol Projects. How do we staff that program? And I'll share it with you, and I don't think I ever shared, we never shared it with the board, but we shared it internally, and it's a working document. And it was a good option and an opportunity for, for me and the staff. We'll share some of it with you. I know I'm confusing Dave, because he's supposed to pull up slides, but hang in there with me. You know, it includes our guiding principles, talked about our projects, talked about our decisions that are data-driven, our decisions are fiscally responsible. But I want to be able to share some of this with you as a part of the retrospect, if that was a part of what we did. Want to talk a little bit about East Splosh 1, and how far back that goes. So, as you're aware, Splosh is a five-year program, correct? So, if we in East Splosh 4, you do the math, as to the age of some of those systems that we have now. Butler, Gassen, it just all depend on where they were in that program in regards to construction. Lesson learned from Butler, try not to build on an occupied campus. That was a occupied campus, and it was a nightmare for us. So, when you start talking about facilities and buildings, and why we hold on to some of them, because it's called swing sites. What happened there, we were new to the game, we were new to the industry, and we had students and staff on that site while we were building a school. And I promised that I would never, ever try to do that again.
And then you did it. Successfully.
See, you know, maybe I am a bully. Now you see why I'm a bully? Because I get bullied. Because now I'm gonna tell you, I know where you live. And the look that you're giving me, I like you too. No, but what we try hard not to do. How about that? Is that better?
We were successful.
It might have been better if you let him have lunch.
And, and he's the one who wanted lunch.
I have food in my mouth.
He was the one who wanted lunch. But we try our best not to build on occupied campus, if at all possible. Where we can swing them, we swing them. You saw us do some of that down here with A.B. Williams. We were able to take them over to a swing site. And you're gonna hear us talking about in E4, when we, when I get to that, that we're probably gonna have to swing Jacob B. Smith. We'll do disservice to that community by building there, because we thought we could modernize the building, but we cannot because of some of our research. We were able to do it successfully at Jenkins, because we put portables there too. Yeah. So, it kinda had a hybrid model. So, we're doing our homework, we're doing our due diligence. We just don't go in and say, we're going to do that. But I want you to pay attention to what we're referring to now, is those legacy systems, you know, those schools that we have to go back into and pay close attention to. New Hampstead High School actually crossed over into a East Splosh 1 and East Splosh 2. So, you see how we have grown over the years, certainly in regards to dollars as well. That's a lot of money that we manage as relates to our construction program. So, you see what happened in East Splosh 1, East Splosh 2. And one of the good things about East Splosh, that we're debt-free. We're able to pay off all of the debt, all of our bonds that we had. I mean, we were carrying bond and debt from when we built Georgetown, and when we put all of those mapes in place, and we were still carrying that debt. So, East Splosh allowed us to, to become a district that is debt-free. We work well with those dollars. We lean on our legal team consistently. And we're, and, and I'm gonna go ahead and say this. Charter school children are our children.
Yes.
They are our children, who made the decision to attend a charter school. So, we consistently work with our facilities rep, Miki Schubert, we have a really good rep from the state of Georgia. So, we consistently work as to what those rules are, what those laws are. Spent a lot of time with Brian. How can we allocate dollars? Can we allocate East Splosh dollars? Can we maintain not only our buildings, but what can we do to support our charter school families? And we'll continue to have that dialogue. We'll continue to work, we'll continue to vet, to see what, because I can promise you, in my travels, especially when I'm visiting schools, and I'm over at Coastal Montessori, I am very concerned.
Yes.
As a citizen first, as to all of the construction that's going on, not in their back door, but in their front yard. It is very concerning, the days that I'm going down 17, and I make the decision to turn off to go and look at what's happening at Rocket. I'm all for advancements in construction and warehouses, but there are students back there that, that area, and we met with them this week, and one of my recommendations is a part of their application, is considering a different location. Not only just as a facilities person, but as a citizen of this community, where we have those students, and it's not in their best interest. So, know that anything that we can do within the bounds of the law and the regulations, we're willing to do it. We're gonna talk about some other facilities too. Those are decisions, you make the recommendation to the superintendent, who makes the recommendation to the director to me, but we're gonna tell you what you have in your inventory as well. So, we're gonna talk a little bit about that. But I wanted to be able to bring that on the table as we're having the dialogue today. E4 overwhelmingly passed. So, that said a lot to us, that we have trust and we have faith in you. We'll audit it consistently. We, we, the folks will have two audits, an internal and an external. Our external and internal audit comes back with no findings. So, we're real proud to make sure that you know that we're responsive. What the referendum said that we're responsible for doing is what we do. So, you'll see what we're proposing as a part of E4, how we can continue to work to make sure that we're good stewards of the taxpayers' dollars. But more so than anything, we want to make sure that we're responsive to the overall needs of the district as it relates to academic. So, we'll continue to work on that. So, how do we get to where we are now? We had a program manager who was responsible for total oversight of your program. You know what a program manager is responsible for? They oversee the fulfillment of the large organizational needs. They coordinate the activities, they manage the projects, but they don't drill down. When you look at the number of employees, this was our first program manager. It was URS in collaboration with Pat Mathis, that's a local MWBE firm. So, we were able to go back into our database and determine just what the staffing level was, what the cost was, and you'll be able to see what our cost sheet is. I included that in your packet as well, and what that cost was. But recognize that this cost was for high-level, not boots-on-the-ground, not folks that were on projects every day, because I just read to you what the definition of program management is. They're responsible for the overall responsibility and carrying out the organization's high-level goal. So, what we saw with some of those projects, we had what we refer to as construction managers at risk who came in and then were paid 4% of the overall project for oversight and construction, in addition to having a program manager. It was the going thing in the industry. We did it. We're not the only one that did it. Everybody was doing it. But how many years ago was that? That was... That was the industry choice at the time. So we were no different from anyone else, and I'll be able to show you some information from some of our colleagues, especially in the Atlanta area, what Atlanta Public Schools, Fulton County, and some of the other districts were doing. So in E2 and E3, you saw where we made a change relative to oversight with Parsons Environmental, Environment and Infrastructure Group, with Thomas and Hutton and Vanguard as their sub consultants from that period of twenty twelve to twenty seventeen. So again, you see their configuration. You see the program directive, you see the executive management, you see the community outreach and all of the other, and it's in your packet. And then you see what the cost was there. Again, that high level. You see what the number of project managers, but then you saw a program manager at risk or you saw CMR at risk in most of the instances. Again, you see what occurred in E3, you see those dollars there and you see the configuration. So this is probably around the time that I transitioned from procurement to facilities. So very similar to what occurred with transportation, kind of did a role show, talked with colleagues, looked for best practices, where the efficiency and effectiveness was in, in other organizations and how we could be more strategic as, as an organization. We wanted to make some changes, we wanted to see a higher quality of a finished product. We were challenged. Not saying it was the, the wrong thing to do, but just how could we get to the next level in regards to providing services? So some of our research, so now Dave, you get to click for me. What you saw us do in East Splash Four is if you can click on maybe Atlanta Public Schools, um, facility there, Capital Projects Organization. What you see occurring now is a lot of the school districts are running what they refer to as a hybrid. They still have a program management firm in addition to having district staff to augment them. So you have specific oversight on projects, not just having a program manager responsible. And you see project managers, their vacancies, um, Jerry here, we work very closely with him. And I'm not sure if you have the, the actual cost, but it is a collaboration with contractors as well. So you'll see on their org chart with augmented with contractors, just as you see with ours now. So we run a hybrid, we don't talk about it in the sense of being a hybrid, but we still have Parsons, we still have Vanguard. They are a part of a program management firm in addition to the district having district staff. And you'll see in your, your folder, and if not, I'll get either Elizabeth or Dale to actually show you, to provide you with the sheet. Where we actually looked at, we broke it down as far as FTE, how many people or how much time would be required on a project. Dale and Elizabeth, I think it's, it may be over there where you all are, if I didn't put it in the folders. It is the one that gives you the, the plan, you'll see some of it that's highlighted. We looked at every project that was scheduled for E4 and how much time would it require in terms of a person on a project. Worked very closely with our HR team, with our finance team, as well as, um, projects to make sure that we could account for every, every dollar and how we want to spend it. So what you'll be able to see is in that document is how we drill down, maybe determination of what the needs would be and when to bring them on. You don't bring them all on at one time. Depends on where you are and, and what phase of the project. And that's how we make sure that we're being efficient in regards to costs. So if you want to pull up, this is Atlanta, if you want to pull up Fulton County's, we can take a quick look at, at their hybrid. Some of them, one is using Jacobs as their program management. Yeah, we can look at Fulton as well. So just wanted to share with you that we, we look at other organizations, which I'm not afraid to say that we do. We share a lot of information with colleagues. We always want to look at what those best practices are. And that's kind of how we decided that we wanted to move forward and make sure that we were providing the highest possible quality, looking at the opportunity to lower our costs. Um, I think one of those first projects in, in E3 was White Bluff, where we had budgeted about twenty-three million dollars. That project came in at about eighteen million. And we had district staff that was assigned to that specific project and was providing oversight on the project. So that's how we evolved to where we are, where you get to have the opportunity to have dedicated staff assigned to a project. So as that project evolves, we make the determination and being able to have the staff on-site, on-site at the beginning of the design phase, then the construction phase. So we're working together from start to finish. So that's a quick, go ahead and, and pull up the next one. So you, I, I, I wanted you to see some of the other districts, um, org charts so you could kind of see what we're actually doing. We're running a, a hybrid, just like some of our other colleagues. And what I've also provided you with in a color-coded, in your blue, in your blue folder is your policies. You set the policies. We bring the information and the recommendation to you. We've had those discussions relative, um, to what those next steps and what we should be working on. We talk a lot about it in CIC. So I can assure you what we're running, what we're operating, how we're configured. We have the opportunity and the flexibility based on the policy. We looked at the decision and how we should operate, and that was our recommendation. Should it change? If it's not working, then certainly we'll go back and reevaluate. But we're currently operating a hybrid with a program management firm. We still have Parsons as a part of the team along with Vanguard in addition to bringing on contractors, just as you saw with some of the other groups. Just as we presented in our Capital Project Staffing Plan. The plan entails, includes job descriptions, very detailed job descriptions as to what the roles and responsibilities would be of the staff, of the contractors, and at what point is it a full-time SCCPS East Splash position? Some that are vacant is listed as, as needed. Some are full-time. Some of them are general fund, not all employees are funded from East Splash. And our chart breaks it down and provides you with the staffing level. And I guess it's kind of my fault, I never really brought this document forward after we worked on this back in March as we were preparing for the staff. But it gives you the name of the projects, I think you may be able to pull it up, but each of them should have a copy of it. And it tells you the title, the function, the status, the funding source, if it's full-time, if it's, if it's district, if it's a contractor, responsibilities, and we even looked at pay grades as well. So I wanted to make sure that you were sure, to assure you and provide you with a retrospective as to how we reached the point of where we are in regards to operating our East Splash program. Any questions with me before we move to the next one? Yes, Mr. Catchmark.
I'm almost afraid to raise my hand. I just don't want to get bullied. Thank you for all this information. One of the things that isn't here that we talked about before is, uh, what we pay people? Our schedule is for our architects and our contractors, what we pay internal school district positions and then what we pay contractors. And we've evolved in how we manage programs from E1 until now. But part of the evolution is frankly, when the, when the rest of the world is busy with construction, it's a much more competitive market and we can't attract. I mean, if you look at this, if you look at this capital, this sheet, it's got a lot of vacant positions. We have trouble attracting people that are qualified to those positions because they, they can make more money in private industry. We get those services then by paying for contractors, which gives us flexibility. So I don't know what the right answer is. I think what we need to consider is, as a board and then advice from our facilities team is, is our pay schedule current? I know in our policies, we've got a fee schedule for architects, et cetera. We haven't modified those in a long time. But are we losing bids? Are we seeing less competitive bid, bid process? Do we need to change those? And I think the answer is sometimes yes, sometimes no. I think as part of this discussion and analysis, what we need from district staff is, here's what we recommend in terms of modernizing, how we compensate and how we pay so that we can, we can be competitive and stay on schedule.
And, and, and thank you, that's a good observation to, to, to reach back up again is when someone, an employee, I mean, everything we do is public anyway. When Pete Shanker left the city of Savannah and recognizing Pete's skillset, Pete, Pete was like me over at the school district. We have to get inspections, we have to get permits from, um, through the city and through the county. So being the bully that I am, I had staff find out how to reach him, how to find him. I personally recruited Pete Shanker. That is no secret. I bullied him. I, I, and the reason I did was because of his skills that we could use that would be transferable. So we had Pete come and work for us for a while, but Pete Shanker was very clear and honest with me. I'm, I'm retired, not Vanessa, I'm, I'm not gonna work for that. And I got it. So that's when you saw us start bringing contractors on. He said, I don't need your benefits, I don't need your retirement because I have that. But he had something that we needed. He could help us navigate through inspections, permits. So why not give us the flexibility is when those skillsets are there that we can utilize them. All, you heard all of those people talk about the number of years they have in the district. So when you have those highly qualified and highly skilled individuals in the market who may be available, you know, some, some will do it and some will not, we want to be able to have that flexibility to match their skills up with us. We advertise for positions, they are advertised, they remain vacant. Sometimes we're able to attract folks who're still looking for a job with some benefits and with a retirement plan. But in this industry, we don't, we're not finding a lot of that. So we do need to have that flexibility to bring individuals on who are qualified under a contract, as a contractor. And we're utilizing those services as your policy says, on an ad-need basis, where we are, where we need those expertise. And yes, we'll continue to, to vet those salaries and bring that forward. But I think this document that we worked on, I think this helped us a lot. And I think we probably need to share this if it's okay with you. Dr. LeVette, you'll see how we looked at each position, we graded each position. Certainly, if you pay attention to, like you said, Mr. Catchmark, the salary scale is in the packet. But what you may not have noticed that when we had URS back in the first East Splash One, that's what our salary scale is now for architects and some of those engineers, almost twenty years old. So tell me how many highly qualified individuals that we are going to attract as we make sure that we're being as fiscally responsible on a four-hundred-and-twenty-million-dollar East Splash. Ms. Hall, you had your hand up.
Yes, um, I notice, I recognize some of the names here on staff. So these are all people who've come through HR and are recommended by the superintendent to us. Am I correct? Because it looks like these are all people.
Yeah, and, and some of them, some of them are hybrid. Like I said, it's hybrid and then some of them are contracts. And what, and what you'll see me do sometimes is we'll advertise the position, I will advertise the position, may not get anyone to respond to it. I will get someone and when we get to the point where it's not a salary that they are willing to accept, then we consider them as a contractor because they don't, I don't need, they'll say, I don't need benefits, I don't need retirement. But if they have the skills that we need and we can have them for a specific time period, then it's in our best interest to consider that as an option. And that's the flexibility that we want to be able to have to continue to do.
So do you have that flexibility?
We, we bring the recommendation in, it goes to the superintendent for consideration, then, and we bring everything to the board. Our contracts come to the board, our hiring decisions come to the board, and you make that final decision. But we do our due diligence in regards to how we manage that process. We don't want to have a person on and there's really nothing for them to do or to the level that they should be. So we try to make sure that we're bringing them on whenever we need them, when it's in our best interest. I mean, oftentimes when we, um, have our meetings, Dr. LeVette said, you know, here you go again, you're not bringing the people on, you're not bringing them on until you get to a certain point. Because we, we are very cautious, we're very fiscally concerned about how, how we operate and how we manage those dollars. So that's what we want to be able to continue to do is identify the highest quality folks. We want to be able to recruit those that are out there in the market and bring them on and have them a part of our team and as a, and as a part of our projects. Any question? Okay, one here, one here now.
Just, just for clarification, so the, the ones that are listed under staff, are these staff and contractors or all the ones that are listed on here are, are district staff?
You have to highlight it when I don't have to highlight it because that, that should have been.
Well, I recognize all the names.
Yeah, so those are, those are staff. That, that's staff, it says staff.
Yeah, if you look at the last column.
But the other one, the black and white one that you.
You may not receive, you'll see what we talk about. Where you can see a vacant contractor, a vacant executive. You have that. Is it?
This one.
That's it.
I don't, I don't have that.
So you'll see where when we look at the program, the hours that the program should be functioning.
You'll see where we have contractor. We want that. Now you, now you have it, now you, now you can follow me. So we, we did, we did our, I think Dr. LeVette gave me this back five times, which was fine. Because we wanted to be as detailed as possible, because we're talking about four-hundred-and-twenty-million dollars worth of work. And a large percentage of that is in salaries. So her message to me is that you need to make sure that you're very clear. It needs to be clearly defined as to what your needs are, how you're gonna categorize them, how many employees. And, and still, if we can't get a position filled, then we go back and say, then I need to consider this position as a contractor. I can't fill, we can't fill the position by advertising it the traditional way. We need to be able to have that flexibility. So you'll see where we logged or categorized some positions as contractor, they may still be vacant. We may have had an opportunity to fill them, but we want to be able to do our due diligence and work through that process. So it's not just an arbitrary decision. We looked at the entire program. We looked at what was going to be, what some of the needs are. Did we capture one-hundred percent? Probably not. But we're always willing to go back to the table and make the decision as what's going to be, because we're certainly dealing with the scarcity. Not even at this level, we, I'm dealing with in the transportation. As much as we've done there in regards to, um, sign-in bonuses, retention bonuses, all of the flexibility that we can possibly afford them, it is just a time right now where it's very difficult to attract those highly qualified and. where it's very difficult to attract those highly qualified individuals. If you ever drive down 16 with all of the construction and all of the warehouses, we're competing with them every day. Do I try to get some of those folks to come work for us every day? You know, Heath and I have something going on right now. He got to somebody before I could get to them.
Shame on him. Well, thank you. This is awful. So do you feel, so there's a lot of vacancies obviously. If you are able to fill those vacancies, do you feel then that we are out of place to manage our programs? Or do you know, you anticipate bringing in additional program management assistance?
That's what we have CMAs. If you look down there where it says CMAs there. Those are our contract managers that we currently have agreements with Brownstone.
Brownstone, Mathis and.
Yeah, yeah. So we can bring them on in some of those areas where we need to have additional attention to detail. So you see that as, as already programmed in as an option in addition to contractors. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Oh, I'm sorry.
My question is a little different. I'm looking at the Capital Projects Comprehensive Staffing Plan and I see a line item for furniture fixtures. Is there some type of procedures that we use for furniture in schools that's been around for maybe 20 years, 30 years? For example, the wear and tear of students' desks, cafeteria tables. And I know that the principals that's in your form are contested not having that in their budget. So is there some type of check for furniture as far as the condition of, of furniture in schools? I see the line item for 500,000, but I'm not sure.
And, and most of that is for, most of the furniture for new schools are in their budgets. But what we look at is trying to upgrade some of the furniture. You'll see it in renovations. I think in this budget, Mr. Jackson has allocated some additional dollars for cafeteria upgrades as well. We started with some cafeterias previously. And in our 308 budget, in our 308 budget, in the 308 budget, where I don't get a lot of money, but get money. We can have that flexibility there, whatever those needs are. And cafeterias was one of the ones we were working on, especially in those high school cafeterias where we still had those high school students sitting and eating and consuming meals on tables with boost, like booster seats with. That's the first area that we started working on. So as we continue to work and take a look at, and when we renovate schools, we try to identify those dollars in those budgets where we can update furniture as well. Because if you go into a new school and then go into a legacy school, it's like night and day.
And we do get those requests from time to time, but most of the time we just work with principals because there are not major purchases. They just need to replace the desk, some desks in classrooms or something in the front office. It's not to a level where it may go to Capital Projects, but we have money in the budget to assist them with those smaller purchases.
Are they aware of that? Are the principals aware of that?
Um, most months that we hear from, we help. Um, is it like public information that we just tell principals? They always come up, come up with reasons to purchase.
And, and we help evaluate it. And a lot of times when we do get, when we receive those calls, oftentimes then we'll say, okay, we'll work with Mr. Jackson. We're suggesting that you, that you go and take a look at that. And you had a question, Mr. Kegler, before I.
I'll follow up with you later.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kegler, for the break.
Oh. Okay. Okay, she says we're going to take a break and have lunch. Okay.
We're going to let you have lunch, Dr. Bringman. Thanks, everybody, for being patient this morning. All of the topics are important and they're all, they're all topics that you requested information on. So we're going to take about a 35-minute break to have lunch. I think lunch is ready for us. Thank you so much for your attention this morning and we'll break now for lunch. Thank you. Lunch?
Ms. Kate. In your presentation.
It'll be here for a little while longer and I know that you can multitask. So that you are invited to continue to enjoy until we, until we ask you to clean up. I did get a question over our little break about HR and hiring for the vacancies. So I'm not going to attempt to respond to that. But the question was, why are we continuing to have vacancies that were referenced earlier? So I'm going to ask Mr. Ray to, to speak to that. And then Mrs. Miller Kegler is going to come forward to do the last part of her presentation. We thank our, our colleagues from Academic Affairs who are enjoying a great lunch for their patients as we look to complete the last part of the day, looking at the third grade reading outcomes. Mr. Ray?
Yes, Madam Superintendent, thank you. The question about what, you know, what are we doing about the vacancies that Ms. Miller Kegler mentioned as far as Capital Projects? We worked on a, we worked on these sheets and worked on the actual staffing with them collaboratively. And when we get to a point of posting most of the positions, many of the positions we went through were created. So we're in the process of advertising them. And for some that we were able to advertise, we were filling internally. And so we'll see what happens externally. But as far as doing a market analysis, we did a market analysis of where those positions fall. And we're talking about the, pretty much the senior, senior project managers and executive project managers. And we were in that, in that domain as far as where our salaries were. Once we added an additional $10,000 bonus, which is what they supplement that they all receive in those spans. And also a starting salary that takes them as 10 years' experience that they begin with. So anybody coming in gets that 10-year experience bump. So those are the two things that happen that don't happen with other employees in the district. So we are doing something. We'll see how it works. But there is something that is being done other than the standard core, what you see as far as if you just look at it and say, it's a pay grade of A1, A2, A3. There's additional things that are occurring within that. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I think it's important to, to note the work of the Capital Project staff along with the HR to make adjustments. And also the needs seem to be evolving in Capital Projects. So new job descriptions have been done, supplements have been added. And as soon as they are ready, then we'll be advertising. I'm sure anybody can go quickly and look to see that maybe those advertisements are not there. But as soon as they work those out, those positions will be posted. And certainly that will be done with the market analysis already have been completed. So thank you for your patience on that. Ms. Miller Kegler is ready for the final part of her presentation. And that'll be followed by our Academic Affairs colleagues.
Dr. Levett, I want to say something in response to Mr. Ray.
Yes.
I think the fact that I, the reason I asked earlier about what future ready meant, I think that we may need to analyze our mindsets about what future ready means as a board. Because I get the sense that we are trying to, for instance, if Ms. Kegler says she needs a contractor who says, this is the amount I will come and work for. And it's beyond what we see as, what you want, that we have to be able to give her the flexibility. If this is somebody you really need, if this is somebody who has all qualifications you want, then we have to be ready to give her the flexibility to get that person on board. Because I think we still think of the little school teachers and what their salary is and so. And I'm not saying we do that, but I'm just saying to board members, let's try to stretch our minds as much as we can so we're not an obstacle to future ready, which is what I kind of think we sometimes are now. Thank you.
Thanks for making that comment. I think it's also, I'll go back to what I said yesterday. That works really well for us is when the elected officials are then accosted about, you gave a contract to this one or you employed this one and they're making 400, $500,000. That's when the challenge comes. So I think we, we understand what the market demands and it is very often 300, $400, $500,000 a year. And the question is, are the elected officials willing to manage all that? So we'll continue to do that work and keep you posted on it. I think it's, you know, it's an evolving kind of situation. But I, I think it certainly does warrant more conversation. Dr. Howard Hall?
And also to our instructors, our welders, welders, you know, our teachers that teach welding and culinary arts and different trades that we have within throughout the schools. They should be getting paid more than the average teacher based on their skillset as well.
Yeah.
And that. And that's what we, that's what we find is a challenge. So it's not just in Capital Projects. It's also in our career tech fields. We, you know, we just sent you the clip where the young woman graduated from, from Woodville and went over to JCB and started out, you know, as a journeyman and actually ended up in a matter of days, you know, being considered a master welder right out of high school. So things are very, very different and we are going to have to think differently. The key is whether you think differently as a board and whether the public feels differently. I can make some other comments about that, but I won't. Because Ms. Miller Kegler is going to come forward.
You say elected officials, but we're leaders. We're community leaders and that means educate. Talk to your public. Don't just take the criticism and say, oh, okay. Explain, you know, teach.
Well, let's hope these sessions have helped you to learn more so that we can all be ambassadors, educators and informers. Thank you, Ms. Miller Kegler, for coming forward and bringing forward this last piece.
I want to talk a little bit about capacity. We kind of opened up, had some discussions based on Mr. Ray's information as well. I talked earlier about buildings that are 50, 60%, some that are over 100%. You see what some of those are. Wanted to introduce capacity. One that's always been concerning to me when we opened it, when we look at the school that's at 40, 50% of capacity, certainly we have to. And recognizing that New Hampstead K8 is a new building, we'll be working on that as a part of the work group that I introduced early. It's a team effort between our academic team as well as with Capital Projects and Facilities as to just what your plans, your future plans are and how we manage that. So we have provided you with five years of data relative to what capacity has been and what those percentages and that utilization. So not only are we just going to present this data, we're going to start acting on this data and making those decisions. If we see over years where we have just had just low utilization, low capacity in those buildings, how do we right-size this? How do we make sure? Certainly we're concerned about the years during the pandemic. You know, that wasn't an anomaly. So we'll be reaching back and looking to see what has happened in those particular areas as well. And again, we'll be making recommendations back to the superintendent. I'm excited about the work group. Elizabeth will be leading that team. I just feel something going on behind me. So Elizabeth is going to be, be leading that with our academic team. We need to, you know, dig deep down what's happening, what do we need to do, what are those next steps? And how we're making sure that we're as efficient as possible in operating those buildings. So you have the data. You see it. We'll continue to not just talk about it, but act to it and see how we can break forward some recommendations. Long-range residential development, we talk a lot about it, but we want to be able to share more what we do with you. We work behind the scenes. We're looking at what's happening. This was a new chart that, that Liz kind of worked on and we broke it down by district. Normally you'll see us bring the, the large map out, but we were able to, to map out and look at what's been happening here, what's happening in the district where there's a possibility of more seats and, and breaking it down by district. So I'm curious to hear some information back from you all when you get a chance to actually go through that. The good thing about proactive, for, for operations is that we have the CIC meetings where we can always continue our conversations relative to facilities and buildings and operations. So that is always helpful for us as a team. So you'll see what we evaluate, what we're looking at because growth is something that's certainly on our minds. We're always thinking that it's only happening in the West Side and Western Chatham County. But there's going to be growth and we don't know what's going to happen once the new plan opens in Bryan County. You will have more folks moving in. They're not going to all live in Bryan County. We're probably going to have some residual in Savannah as well. So those are things that we have to start preparing for and making some decisions about. So this is data that we've been able to acquire as it relates to development and what's happening. We look at all of the municipalities. You're going to hear Mr. Boltman talk about Pula and talk about Bloomingdale. But we have drilled down as, as far as we possibly could is looking at what has come up for approval, the number of housing units and what schools could potentially be impacted. So we're paying attention to what's going on around us and how that's going to impact us as a, as a school district. Just, I wanted to put this in because we've been talking about Western Chatham County a lot with New Hampstead High School. When we brought that school on in 2012, 2013, here are all of the schools that we rezoned students from. If you go back and look at your chart and see what their utilization is, that's where, where we populated this school. But now that the development is actually happening in that area, now some of these students will be able to go back to their home school. So we're looking at that as an opportunity to assist us with right-sizeing. Not only with buildings, New Hampstead High School alone has 20 buses. Now that if we can have some of these students reassigned back to their home school, what's that going to do? That's going to reduce the number of buses that's going there. So we want to be able to capitalize on having additional buses possibly in the ensuing school year. So we're just not looking at one aspect. We're looking at all of the aspects and how we can make a positive impact. So we're drilling down and we're looking at, well, what happened here? What may have caused that? We're looking at previous maps to see where students were reassigned from and how we can become more efficient, not just in transportation and in our buildings as well. We're looking at the entire district. Any questions? So Mr. Boltman is going to come and talk a little bit about Capital Projects, some of the need that we have. We'll talk a little bit about. Yeah, right there. We'll talk about some buildings and some needs as well.
All right, good evening. And so I'm going to try to make this pretty quick. One of the things that I, I do want to give the board and our leadership, you know, credit for is that you guys, y'all, y'all give us a lot of input. And so we take that Atlantic Avenue, Jenkins, it is a world-known school now. Savannah High, you know, the way that facility looks right now. And the latest one is the photo-voltric system, solar panels that we put on the K-12. And so what we're trying to do is get Chris Womack, who is the CEO of Georgia Power. I went back and had them do a little research. This solar panel system that we put on this school is capable of powering 100 houses by itself. I don't know if you realize that, but no other school in the state of Georgia have this capability. And so, you know, we beat up on ourselves a lot of times about what we do, but we doing a lot of good stuff in this particular district, you know? One of the things that we need to continue to do is, you know, provide us that feedback. One of the things that we need to continue to do is, you know, provide us that feedback, you know? You push us and we go out and do it. Initially I said, hey, we can't do that. And you said, no, go back and do the same thing, same thing with the K twelve. Ms. Mila Kegler came to me and said, hey, we're going to put three schools in one on Highway twenty one. I said, no, we can't do that. And so it's opening up. So I just want to say that, that we are doing a lot of good stuff. And you guys, y'all push us and we don't say no, we just go and try to make it happen. So just continue to do that. But I just want to tell you kind of, next slide, about how we go and do our business. We talked a little bit about enrollment projections, but we actually have to have numbers. So the tenth day and the last day count in June or May or whenever that happened, that's when we get the action. Our, our money that we get from Georgia D O E is for actual students in the seats. And so what we've been seeing over the last five years is we're losing students in the seats. About two hundred and thirty seven students per year. Okay, that's equivalent to a small elementary school. And that's what we're seeing. So in our heyday, we was around about thirty seven thousand. We're projecting about thirty four thousand, that's students in the seats, K through twelve. Okay, so K through twelve, we don't count pre-K. So pre-K may be in the building, but we get funded from K through twelve. You've seen this map, the next slide, this is kind of where all our schools are located. And we have a problem on the two oh four side. If you look at that, and the problem we have is in Savannah, Chatham County, that is not a lot of land to be purchased. So we're going to have to get very, very creative when we start talking about building new schools. Because there's going to come a time where we're going to have to build new schools. Right now, we're looking at what this Bryan County Hyundai plant is going to do to the system. I'm talking to my counterparts. What we think is going to happen is a lot of that housing activity is going to happen in Effingham and Bryan County. But we still going to get some of that growth here as well. And so we're looking at how we can go out and occupy more, get more land. But it's not land to be, to gotten here. So we're looking in the Poole, Bloomingdale area, some of the more rural areas that land has not been picked up. But anything around the port, you can forget about it, it's already, it's already warehouses. Next slide. And this just shows you kind of how we have spent our resources through all of E one, E two, E three. Ms. Kegler gave you analysis of that. What I want to talk to you about is we, we have spent a whole lot of dollars in brand new schools. But we have a lot of need for our schools that are not brand new. All the schools in E one is no longer brand new anymore. The average H V A C system, the average roof lasts about twenty years, twenty, twenty-five years. We have some schools, I'm going to show you right now, that we have that are operating with H V A C units that are twenty years old. And it's very difficult to get parts for those. So our strategy for E four is going to be a little different than what we have for E three. And we'll sit and we'll talk about those, next slide. I don't know if you remember it, but we took you through an exercise where we ranked all the projects and we gave you an opportunity to go in there and do all of the planning. And we gave you the money and we said you can only spend four hundred and twelve thousand dollars, four hundred and twelve million dollars, but you couldn't do everything, right? And then we took that plan and we actually made that our E four plan. Our current need is seven hundred and fourteen million dollars just for our need to rebuild some of our schools. We only going to collect, on average, probably about four hundred and twelve million of that. So that leaves a good gap, right? So we're going to have to be a little smarter about how we, how we're doing things. Next slide. And I believe you have these in your package, go back and take a look at it. We talked about red, green and yellow, the F C I and how we rank those. Those are national building code standards, basically, is what Parsons do for us. And so what those standards take in consideration is, is your H V A Cs, your roofs and all your critical components. And it put that in a formular and that is what your F C I, it comes out to be. And so if you're getting an F C I anywhere in the fifty, sixty range, you're pretty good. Anything below that, then you're going to need some help. And if you look at most of the schools that's in red, if we did this right, should be in E four. You want to get some of those schools that are in yellow because it's not going to last five more years. So you try to get all of your reds and most of your yellows. Okay, next slide. And this just shows you some of our other components that we don't talk a lot about. Two oh eight, Whitney Complex and some of those administrative sites. We get zero dollars from the state for those, for those facilities, zero dollars. Okay, so anything fills in those, it has to come from the general fund. Next slide. Here's, here's our five year H V A C plan that we have just, we have adopted this to be able to go back and do some of these H V A Cs. Because when we looked at and ranked all of these, all of these schools here and these particular schools is a run the failure mode. They would not last two years. And so we were able to go back and adjust some of our projects. We didn't take anything out, we just made some adjustments. And we're going to get all of those H V A Cs within the next two years. Next slide. And I want to talk to you about some assessments that we have done. We did one with Jacob G. Smith, we went in and we took a look at it. And we made the analysis that even spending about twenty to twenty-two million dollars on just going in and trying to rebuild that, there still was going to be some issues in terms of electrical and plumbing that we would not be able to fix. And so that school became a target for new construction. We've also done the analysis for Bloomingdale and Poole. And what I'm going to show you here is that analysis is showing us that if we put money into these particular schools, then we're not going to get our return on equity that we want. And we're making a recommendation that we need to do something different. Next slide. If you look at some of these structural items on these particular schools, it's showing you where some of the equipment is so degraded that even if we put the money to go in there to fix them, we're going to be putting more money into the school than what you could build a new school for. Next slide. Same way with Poole, we did the same assessment with Poole. We went out to Poole and if you look at some of the infrastructure in Poole, it is the same way. Next slide. And these are some of the conditions of the equipment that's in those particular schools. And so we talked about how student achievement is tied into a facility. This is the school that we're bringing our kids into. And, and we've already been told by our Parsons team that this does have an impact. And so we're recommending that, you know, we have the capability of putting our kids in a school, a K eight, brand new, and give them that chance that we really need so we can go ahead and tear this school down and do something different with it. Next slide. Same thing with Southwest. Next slide. Windsor Forest. Next slide. Jacob G. Smith. Next slide. Logo Tibet. Next slide. Garrison. Next slide. You get, next slide. Okay. Formy. Next slide. Southwest Middle. Bartlett. And we've started working on Bartlett, so a lot of these schools we have started working on. But if you're looking at some of these schools and some of the infrastructure that we have in these schools, and this is the same information that Parsons is going to come back with us in. Savannah High. Coastal. And maintenance and operations. So what, what, the picture I'm trying to paint to you is that in E one, E two and E three, we spent a lot of money on new construction. However, we have a greater need now to shift our focus and focus on those schools that have been around twenty, twenty-five years. We can do it, we just got to make sure that our focus is right there. And that, yes, it's good to have a brand new school, but these schools right here and these kids deserve, you know, the same excellence in the schools that we have for the brand new schools. Here's how we have gone back and this is our total cost and estimate for those schools, for E four. And we put some robust dollars in there to make sure that we are doing these to the need that needs to be done. You know, so this is not just a two or three million dollar, you know, go fix a roof or, or H V A C. It's going in and doing a total remodel and making sure that the bones and everything else is good to go. Next slide. And that's what, that number I was telling you about, seven hundred and fourteen million dollars. Well, for, this is not new schools here, this, this is just going back and just trying to get those schools in a position where, you know, we'll be proud to say, hey, this school is part of our inventory. And so we did a great job in one, two and three, don't get me wrong. You know, that's why our focus was, we had to do those things. But now what our assessment is going to show us, that in these schools here, we're going to have to go and do some major, major work to get them up and running. And some of those, you know, we're going to come back and tell you that we've looked at it, we cannot do it as a modification or renovation that we need to go ahead and tear it down and start over. What are your questions?
My question, so thank you for your presentation and for your summary. My question is, I want to make sure I heard what you just said. So on total cost estimate, there are, there are schools that are listed for renovation that you're going to come back and say is not worth it and it needs to be replaced.
Yeah, and we have, yes, and we've done that with Jacob G. Smith. We, we've said that, we've gone through the analysis and said that it's a benefit for us to just go ahead and tear the school down and rebuild it because the cost is going to be about the same.
So Grove's, the multi-campus, the thought process there is let's reduce our footprint so we can get rid of basically two, two buildings consolidated into one site. It gives us the flexibility. If we need more middle school seats one year versus elementary, we, we have the flexibility with the net space. And it also reduces transportation routing and costs in theory. If you look at our enrollment and capacity numbers, and Dr. Buck hits on this every retreat, I think, the vast majority of our schools are under eighty percent capacity, they're in the seventies. Some are oversubscribed. And then we have population shifts in terms of where the growth is and we have limited land. So when you throw all that in the hopper, should we be looking at, at the Southwest, you know, elementary, middle site or other sites out west, kind of building a big K twelve with flex space inside so we can allocate elementary, middle and high seats as needed? It would reduce transportation costs, reduce the operating costs for multiple buildings. Should we be thinking about things like that as part of our planning process? Because if you look at the capacity numbers historically, you know, fifty, thirty, forty, fifty, fifty to seventy-five percent capacity or even eighty percent capacity for many schools over a decade, it's, it's just really inefficient. We can save a lot of money. I, I know there's downsides to one massive building, but we've kind of done that a little bit with the K eights. You know, so our population's going down. The way to save money on short term and long term is to reduce our property and consolidate. So I don't know if that's part of the thought process or if it should be.
Yeah, it, it's already part of our thought process. Vanessa talked about second, third order effects. So in order to do that, we got Pulaski, K eight that we're putting the wing on so to get some of those folks that are Southwest and move them back over. We're looking at, you know, what we can do with White Bluff. And so all of that we're taking a little look at because that's where the growth is. And so as we bring on another wing at Gottlieb Station, it is going to start shifting our focus and start bringing some of those folks back into those particular areas where then we will relieve kind of Southwest. And then we can look at possibly, I believe we're going to have to do another wing or something different down in that particular area. Because that's where a lot of the growth is going. A lot of growth is going out there in the Bloomingdale population. And so that's going to have to be looked at. And so one of the things that we looking at is, you know, rebuilding Bloomingdale. Poole, we took a look at, it's five acres. Georgia D O E is not going to allow us to rebuild on that particular site because of, it is so small. But Bloomingdale is about seven, about eleven point four acres. It meets the, almost meet the twelve acres that we would need to, to put like seven, eight hundred students there. And so we're taking a little look at that very hard. So you're right that, you know, hey, that growth is going to be down there. But we're, we're moving in terms of Pulaski, Gottlieb Station to kind of move those kids back this way.
The point I'm making though, if you've got four schools out in central, western Chatham County, can you consolidate four buildings into one and add a high school? Right. You've got Rice Creek, you can, we've got room there to add building capacity. And then down in Southwest, you've got two schools, but a big campus, you know, do you do one larger school, one larger building with more seats? I'm trying to reduce the number of buildings as opposed to adding on a wing here, adding on two wings there. We did that, we, we went behind with that at Gottlieb since it opened. That's all.
Yeah, and, and we will definitely take that in consideration. But some of the moves that we're trying to do, Savannah High, we're, we're going to have to swing Savannah High because the air conditioning system is going out and you can't have kids in that environment. So we know we're going to have to probably swing Jacob G. Smith. And so where do you swing them to? Because right now, everything is full. And so, yes, we, we taking all that in consideration, but our main focus now is to make sure that the buildings that we do have operating, that we're spending the dollars in those to get them back up to speed. Your hand and then Ms. Halling.
Because I was just curious about Schuman, Schuman's enrollment is at fifty percent. But there's a lot of work that needs to be done at Schuman. Schuman's enrollment is almost the same as Garrison's waiting list. So what do we do in that case when you have a, a building that it needs so much work, yet there aren't, the students aren't there for the enrollment?
And that's. And, and that's, that's, that's something we're going to have to look at. We, Ms. Kegler talked about this working group that we are putting together. We, from a capital project standpoint, recognize that we have buildings that are below capacity. And so we're taking a good look at when we move programs and we have additional capacity at schools. We're now starting to work together as a team so we can work with academics to achieve what they want to do, but also make sure that from a district standpoint, we are not operating schools. But also make sure that, from a district standpoint, we are not operating schools with less than seventy to eighty percent capacity. And so, as they, uh, want to bring programs on, we're going to be there hand-in-hand to talk about how we do that in a manner where it's going to be cost-effective for the district and be able to, uh, move some of these schools that are, are like a Schuman that we may need to look at, hey, do we need to just take that one offline and can we do something different? So, so it, it all goes back to, you know, working hand-in-hand, and that's why we established that working group. Because we felt like, you know, we were working in silos where, you know, we would go build. And when we build, we build these schools at one point two-five percent capacity. So we're building these bigger schools, but we, we weren't getting really anything. So we, we wanted to just make sure that we were all in concert, so we established that working group. And I think you're going to see some phenomenal things come out of that.
And we see what's going on with Rice Creek, you know, is they're building houses, warehouses and everything. And that school is right now, it's at ninety-five percent capacity, I'm quite sure.
That's correct, yeah. Ms. Hall?
Um, just quickly, uh, I'm so happy to hear that your attention is looking at Schuman. And I'm thinking, right there in District 2 also, you have Myers that's below capacity. So maybe those children, you know, if we were to close Schuman down, some kind of way we could, you know, re- reconfigure Myers into a K-8 or something. So, um, I, I'm happy to know about, uh, the possibilities. I seem to also remember that we had an idea of building a school that children from Bloomingdale and Pooler Elementary could go to, but it got caught up in politics and that kind of thing, and it kind of went away. But, um, it is, if anyone goes over to, uh, Pooler Elementary, it's very sad to just ride down that street and see it looks back in the nineteen fifties. So, um, you know, but we do have to realize that politics are all part of this if we don't have just an open, you know, capacity to just do what we want to do.
Thank you very much for the update. Um, I think the STEM replacement is a new problem, major renovations, they now talking about tearing out rebuild, is that correct?
No, on, on that one, we really talking about going in and, and when we did the analysis, we can, we can re- we can actually go in and gut that one. Uh, but what we're looking at is, where would you put those kids? And so, uh, that's the conversation we got to talk about because we, we got a lot of, lot of, uh, renovation that has to go on. But we feel that we can go in there and, and, and do Bartlett and do a pretty good job at bringing it back up to speed. Uh, it, its infrastructure is not as bad. When, most of the time that gives us a problem is electrical and the plumbing. Uh, if we can go in and, and fix those two things and, and they don't become an issue for us, then we can, we can get around most of everything else.
Okay, because it's listed under new school, but, so it's not-
No, it's not going to be a new school, it's going to be, it's actually going to be a major renovation.
Okay.
Now, at one point in time, we, we thought about, uh, building on the same campus and just tearing that one down. But when we went in and took a look at it, we just, it just didn't, we, we feel that we can redo that one in place.
And then kind of in a related, I see eLearning Academy at Largo Tibet and Bartlett. So is the thinking that our eLearning Academy is going to be kind of one school but with two campuses?
Well, at one point in time, we, you know, before, a- at one point in time, uh, before we had Scalia, and a lot of this was, was, uh, prior to Scalia. We was thinking about having it two campuses. But since then, we have gone in and got a school code for just one school at one location. So, we're looking at Mercer is one of the places that we're looking at. Uh, we're looking at Fort Wentworth. Uh, Largo Tibet would not be a good choice because it's in a floodplain area. And so, uh, anything, w- we would not be able to get anything approved for Largo Tibet, uh, brand-new. Because basically, uh, in a couple of years from now, we, we're going to have to do something major different to Largo Tibet.
And, so two more quick things. I think that we are going to see, just like we have twenty-five or four hundred apartments that are going to be built at Oakwood Mall. I suspect we're going to start to see more and more of that infill. So while we will still see, obviously, significant growth on the west side, I do think we'll see continuing gentrification in some of our area areas as well. So I just wanted to be cognizant of that. Um, and then the other thing, in looking at some of the photographs here, I know that, you know, resources are always, um, stretched thin. But it looks like some of these pictures are simply lack of maintenance or deferred maintenance or things like that. Um, or maybe poor construction techniques. I know that the way that the buildings are built across the board, they are not built for lifespan, which they once were, which is so unfortunate. So anything that we can do from a capital side, even, in my opinion, even if it costs a little bit more in the forefront to use better methods, better materials, better design, it is worth it so that twenty years later, which in the life of the building should not be that long, but unfortunately is now a lifespan. Anything we can do to shift that so that we're not just throwing good money after that, I hope that we can continue with those opportunities. Thank you.
I appreciate the, all this information. Couple of things, one is, yes, the whole Pooler Elementary, Bloomingdale Elementary was very political, especially out on the west side. Because those have been in the communities for, you know, for a very long time, early sixties, late forties. Um, and those little neighborhoods love those little cities, those little, um, schools over there. The other thing is that, talking about combining those two schools, um, I would hold off on that just mainly be- just mainly because Pooler's estimated to have almost doubled in its current size in the next ten to fifteen years. Uh, they're looking at to have at least fifty thousand up to fifty-five thousand residents compared to the like, the, between twenty-five and thirty that they have, currently have. Um, the Hyundai plant, just the people who are going to be building that are going to be mo- are also going to be moving into the Bloomingdale, northern Pooler, Fort Wentworth area, um, when they do, when they do arrive, when they come to build it. So we need to be kind of a little cautious out there right now because that's, that's only where our land is. Um, to be able to do any of these larger developments, to be able, where the growth is going to happen. Because, yeah, we could do the fill-ins like Over by Oath Omar and stuff. But for people who, developers, you want to get a lot more return on their investment, they're going to be buying up the acreage. So we need to, we need, if, we might want to consider buying up land, floating bonds, buying land so we have the land. Otherwise, we're not going to be able to do anything. Then what we, and if we end up not needing it, we can turn around and sell it.
Dr. Buck, I think, uh, your hand is up next.
Dr. Buck?
Yes, sir.
Oh, um, as, as Mr. Katsomar had said, I've said for a long time that we needed to watch patterns more than we watched them. Uh, as we started with these spots, one and two, a lot of the buildings that we replaced early were those what I call inside-the-city neighborhood schools, and those are the ones that are least filled right now. Those are the ones that have the least numbers of students in them. I say that because for those neighborhoods, those people, those citizens love those schools. And so when decisions start to be made about closing a Schuman, closing a Brock, closing a, wherever it's going to be, the neighborhood needs to be a part of those discussions. And it will be difficult because they will not want their neighborhood school closed. But sooner or later, the board is going to have to bite the bullet and make some very hard decisions about things like that. Thank God I'm not on the board when Jacob G. Smith parents are telling you, going to tear that building down.
Thanks, John.
Because people have developed an affinity for things that they hold dear and what is, is new to them. The last thing I would say is, we're in the midst of a lawsuit with a charter school, SEMCO, that desperately needs a building. That should be, in my opinion, and they're still suing us, but that should be at the top of our list of where we move somebody first. I had been in favor of Largo Tibet for a year or so, and that's what I told, been told might be a possibility. Now I hear that's not a possibility because we can't do anything to the school. But if you were a parent, and, and you've heard the superintendent say this, if you were a parent and you drove out to SEMCO and you saw that across the property line fence, about as close as that table, or about eighteen thousand warehouses now that are being built, you would be very hurt, offended, and never deign to send your kids to that school. So we need to help them, and they are suing us, and that's unfortunate. But the key is the kids need a school.
Uh, Dr. Hassan Brown, and then-
Thank, uh, thank you. I just, um, want to mention that since we're talking about Schuman and we've, you know, I'm looking at the acreage over there, that's five acres between two, uh, city recreational offerings, the pool and the, uh, community center. And we have fifty-two acres over on, on the other side by Savannah High. And we have piled a little model of a multi-campus. I'd like to hear about options that can provide everything that Savannah High needs, and I know is on the table in terms of the recreational options. But also, is it beneficial to have something combined over there and use that real estate in another way? And I know that the, the middle school component is not in that part. Um, and I don't know that combining Myers or, you know, I don't know exactly what that would look like. But we have the acreage, um, we have the need, we're bound tightly, um, over in that neighborhood. It would be interesting to know, um, what that kind of idea would look like.
Okay, yeah, we could take a look at that. Mr. Moss?
Yes, so, I need a refresher on, when I first moved here, twenty-one years ago, Schuman, and this was before Garrison, Schuman was a performing arts school.
It was, yes.
So we've been talking about the possibility of a second Garrison. Could we not do that at Schuman?
Schuman and Gaston.
Yeah.
Gaston was actually the original.
And Gaston.
And then Schuman followed.
Right.
And so, I don't think there's anything wrong with that. I think right now, we're talking about space. And so I think space and program, programming can go together. One of the things we might think about, because this is a very intense conversation, is to think about how we dedicate maybe some time in an informal session to continue the conversation. Because it doesn't matter what we say, the bottom line is when we say we're going to close buildings, we need to have the fortitude, the courage, and the plan.
Right.
When we move those young people from, uh, AB Williams and the other elementary schools over to Formy, it was a very deliberate, intentional, and compassionate approach that we used. We didn't, we didn't wake up one day and say we were going to do it. The bottom line is it involved board members, it involved staff, and it involved parent representatives. And it has been a very smooth transition. We moved the young people out of Garden City and moved them out with a very intentional, uh, very compassionate approach. We need to close buildings. But we need to have a plan to do that, and we need to have the courage, the fortitude, and the plan. And we need to have an approach, and we're not going to be able to do it overnight. So, great conversation, more conversation is needed. But I'm just going to tell you, it's going to take more than just the conversation to make it happen. And we do have to set, think about it, as Mrs. Babowski pointed out. Gentrification is real. I don't know where you go, but I know places I go, I see lots of gentrification. And the other piece is Chatham Parkway and I- ninety-five and two oh four cannot be ignored. That's right. Those are also areas where we have lots of growth. So we're talking about the west side, but there are lots of other gold pockets that we need to think about. So I just say, it's a great conversation, thank you for inviting us to start it. I would suggest that we dedicate some time, uh, maybe a couple of hours over a series of periods where we actually talk about it, dissect it, and then that way it's not just a matter of, you know, we're going to announce this to the public, because here's the thing.
Yeah.
We can, we, we, we share a lot of information all the time. Smoke signal, email, newsletter, on TV, pe- everything. But people hear what they want to hear. I think we communicate more now than we have ever communicated. But people hear what they want to hear. So I'm just going to say, it's going to take what we did at Garden City and Formy. We're going to have to go out and have conversations with people and have conversations with all the people, not just some of the people. That's am of the best view of the world.
Can I just make one quick comment, and this is something we have talked about. Some of the schools that we have the lowest capacity, we have like fifty percent, are also some of the rural ones that are not performing as well academically. And so I think it would be interesting to see how many students may live within those attendance zones but are attending a choice school. Because I think that has an awful lot to do with it as well. And if we were to address the academic concerns of some of these schools, then we may be able to bring those numbers back up or repurpose them to your, another acorn or whatever else. So I think the academic piece is important.
So I think we'll, we'll take that as a final comment here and just recognize that we need to, um, go back and, I think, do an analysis. I, I'm not always sure that the young people who are in the neighborhoods are not going to the neighborhood school. But I, I think it, it would be helpful for us to have that data. Um, you know, the mayor always says he wants to know how many kids actually live in the city of Savannah. And then we know, you know, how many kids are living in the outskirts. I think that's a good analysis for us as well. I mean, then how many, um, we see a lot of young people associated with gentrification, but I'm not sure that we're seeing school-age kids associated with gentrification at the moment. Um, but I think it's, it's an opportunity for us to do a little more analysis so that we can inform this next conversation we have on it.
Good. We'll plan that during at least these next two months, maybe we do one or two hours informal on that.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Very healthy conversation.
Yeah, it's just like we said, when we opened up, we recognized that we have our own conversations here. It certainly will have to make a, this is crucial, and I'm going to take my seat, you have this coffee. We always talk about, well, how many buildings do you have, what are you doing with some of those buildings? And we can include this on some of our upcoming conversations. But you have it, it gives you an opportunity to review it, tell you a little bit about some of our work. You see Bloomingdale again, you see Pooler again, talk about Jacob G. Smith. And then you see your goal, your former Pulaski, your nursing facilities, those buildings that come up that may not be used. We use primarily these swing sites, um, once the multi-campus goes online, and there's a question relative to goal as well. So you have it, it'll be a part of our ensuing conversation. You see where they're located, you see what the capacity currently, what used it previously in a swing space, those schools that actually occupied it. So the work is our advantage, so this, this, what's next step? So you have that, and we'll include that as a part of our upcoming conversation.
Right. Right, thank you.
And so it does include the operations of community center, Fort Wentworth, Savannah Arts, Eastside Community Center. We're planning a wellness center for that, that's the Schuman, was shared subject with the city, we now own it. And it's also some information about municipal office as well. So we've captured all of those, so we will include that, if that's okay with you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you so much. Thank you, Miss Taylor. Uh, please take that information as you just referenced, um, hold on to it. Of course, we'll provide addition, provide additional copies in the future if we need it. But definitely want to use that as a platform for the, um, other conversations. Um, the, um, um- The, our staff in the back are making notes about what we believe to do for our future sessions, but we're looking forward to having conversations about how we use those, all of our abilities and portfolio. Our academic colleagues have been very patient. We do want to make sure that we have a collective understanding further of reading on grade level, for grade three particularly, but just reading on grade level period. And I'm gonna ask them to come forward. They do have data that they will need to share. Dave?
Good afternoon, everyone. Kristi Collins Rylander, the psychometric statistician, will join me up front. She will be presenting some of the information. This presentation follows a day in the life of a student in early childhood education. And I can tell you, in listening to Vermon's presentation on the eighty-hour work week, it got me thinking about the experiences that our educators go through. So what if we changed the lens and looked at it through a different perspective in the day in the life of a teacher? Would we reach an eighty-hour work week? So to me, that was a very powerful statement. Moving forward, I want to create a quick assessment with you. So when do you think babies start walking? Just throw the, how many months? Throw it out.
Seven months.
Seven months? Eleven?
Eleven.
Eleven?
Because they're from a kid. Twelve.
Twelve. So a common, let's say it's eleven months, right? And then you look at the criteria, what determines that the baby would walk? So we could say five feet, you know, it could be ten feet, five feet, three feet. Let's say five feet would be the baby's proficient in walking. So the one thing to consider when a baby's walking, the CDC says that the general range of a baby walking is between twelve and eighteen months. That is a window with a six-month time span. So if we look, and if we say the cut score is eleven months, how many babies will fail? Think about that. Now however, if they walk three feet or even four feet, they still fail at cut score. These are the babies we call that are developing learners. They just need a little bit of support to get across that finish line. And in the words of Benikana Frazier, we all grow at different rates, and that's okay. And it's very important to know that. So we're gonna take a quick deep data dive on reading measures because it's important to understand all the measures that exist out there. So a variety of them will be covered. The Lexile framework is very important. It's gonna be touched on. It is a tool that is used to track college and career readiness. External and internal factors will be looked at. We'll also look at actual district reading performance. We'll have two schools, two elementary schools we're gonna compare. And then we'll close out with our iReady 2022 reading growth data, which is a very important metric to look at. So now we'll turn it over to Kristi Collins Rylander.
All right, thank you, everyone. Happy to be here with you all. So we're gonna begin our discussion by actually clarifying what we are talking about when we are discussing measures of reading throughout this presentation. As Mr. Feliciano just kinda did the metaphor for us, we don't wanna start talking about how far a child can run if what we're really interested in is can a baby walk, right? And so to begin with, one of the things that I want to immediately point out is that sometimes in your reading, when you're reading publications from external organizations or media outlets or wherever you may find it, you may find that they will cite data on our overall GMASS proficiency scores as an indicator of whether or not our students are reading on grade level. And there's, that's problematic for a couple of reasons. So number one, when we're looking at those GMASS ELA scores, we need to recognize that that reflects not only reading content, but it also reflects writing and language content. And in fact, those content areas are weighted almost equally on the ELA test. And that's not to say that that writing and language content isn't important. But if what we are trying to get a fix on is students' reading ability, then we need to recognize that that overall GMASS ELA score is not really giving us a clear indicator of the reading score. When we look at the achievement level descriptors that the Georgia Department of Education gives us for parents and helping parents to understand what these GMASS levels represent, first of all, you can see that across each performance level, there's some substantial content there related to writing and even research. And then I also want to point out that when you're looking at the data on those proficiency rates, they are typically talking about students at proficient and distinguished. But when we look at that developing performance level descriptor, we can see that these are students who are reading very near grade level. And in fact, it probably would be more accurate to call that developing performance level partially proficient. Because that is what the DOE says when they are giving us information about what that performance level represents. These students are partially proficient and able to be successful at the next grade level with academic supports. So just going back to what Dave just said, right? We all grow at different rates, and that's okay. Just because you're scoring in this developing level does not mean that you're not able to be successful at that next grade level. You just may need a little more support than that student at the proficient or distinguished level. So throughout the rest of the presentation, we're really going to focus on the measures that concentrate on reading. First and foremost, we'll be looking at the GMASS end-of-grade and end-of-course test results in terms of the reading status score. So again, not the overall ELA content area, but we're talking about the reading status score. And that score is based only on the reading and vocabulary content of the GMASS. It is associated with a Lexile score. It results in a status score that says that the student is either reading below grade level or reading at or above grade level. And that at or above grade level score is aligned with the minimum college and career-ready stretch band score that comes from the Lexile framework. And we'll look at that framework a little bit, in a little bit of detail in just a moment. You may also see references in your outside readings, and there even is some within the presentation, to a CCRPI readiness indicator for literacy. That's also based on the Lexile score that comes from GMASS. Except for that criteria looks more at the midpoint of that college and career-ready stretch band. And then we'll also talk a little bit about district formative assessment scores and our current iReady formative assessment, as well as our legacy assessments, going as far back as the SRI and certainly our math assessment that we had prior to iReady. Those assessments all gave us a Lexile score as well. And we use those scores to help us monitor students' progress towards those college and career-ready targets and adjust instruction throughout the year. So one of the key takeaways here, notice that all of these scores, they're focused on reading content, and they're aligned with the Lexile framework. And so what is the Lexile framework, right? Well, Lexile is a measure of text complexity and students' reading comprehension ability. And both of those things are in the Georgia Standards for Reading. And so that led the Georgia Department of Education to partner with Metometrics to make sure that the state test, the GMASS, was linked with that Lexile framework. And Metometrics developed these stretch bands that really are designed to be representative of the levels where students need to be in order to be on a path towards college and career readiness when they leave school. And all of the research is centered around, like, what is the text complexity level that students are going to encounter when they go to college, when they start their career, or when they're just trying to be a citizen out in the world, reading a newspaper, reading a technical publication? And so this is all designed with the aim that typically a student is going to encounter a Lexile demand level of about thirteen hundred once they're out in the world after school. And so these college and career-ready stretch Lexile bands for the, for these lower grade levels are designed to make sure that students are progressing towards that thirteen hundred expectation. So now we're finally to the data part. I thought we'd never get here. So what we're looking at here is the district's data for spring of 2022 relative to what those Lexile college and career-ready stretch band expectations are. So let's see if I can do this without, like, breaking something. These green lines represent the upper and lower bounds of the Lexile stretch bands that we just saw on the table on the previous slide. The little blue diamonds are the midpoint, and that represents our CCRPI criteria. And then that lower boundary of the Lexile stretch band, that's where our reading at or above grade level criteria are for the GMASS. So we're talking about those reading status scores being at or above grade level. That lower green line is what we're talking about. Over here to the far right, you can see what the expected range and the median demand for post-secondary is. And then these green bars represent our district's performance. So overall, when we look at the grade level data, what we can see is that at fourth and sixth grade, our median Lexile score is a good bit below that reading at or above grade level criteria. But in our other elementary and middle grades, we are right at or just a smidge above what the college and career-ready expectation is. And then we get up to our eleventh grade scores on the American Literature and Composition End of Course Test. You can see that our students are well above that reading at or above grade level expectation, and we're actually approaching more of that midpoint of the stretch band. And these students are on track to reach that post-secondary level expectation of thirteen hundred. Now, there's been a lot of discussion about third grade. We kinda gave you the full spectrum of our tested grade levels here, but we are gonna take that deeper dive into third grade. And so what we're looking at here is the percentage of our third grade students who are reading at or above grade level. We do have historical scores here to provide some context, although we do have to note that we've shaded those in gray because those 2018 and 2019 scores really are not comparable to the scores we earned in school year 2022. We are looking at not only our district performance, but our comparison group performance as well. And our comparison group is that group of districts throughout Georgia who are most similar to us in terms of being a large district and in terms of their demographic composition. So when we look at this data on third grade, a couple of things jump out, right? So we can see that historically, back in those non-comparable years, the district and the comparison group were right at about the same level. Both the district and the comparison group were coming in at about sixty-ish percent of students in third grade reading at or above grade level. When we start looking at our new performance baseline here in 2022, we can see that both the district and the comp group have come down quite a bit from that sixty percent. The district currently, as of spring of 2022, was sitting at forty-six percent. And that placed us about five points lower than our comparison group. So then we got a little curious about what else we could learn, right? About this third grade population and these test takers that we've been looking at. So we took a look at what, what were these students' foundational skills when they entered kindergarten? So we took that population of spring 2022 test takers and we matched them back to school year 2019 when they were in kindergarten. And so this same group of test takers, when they were in kindergarten, they began their kindergarten year with about thirty-six percent of them on track for their early foundational reading skills. Once they hit the end of third grade, we had forty-six percent who were actually reading at or above grade level. So that is a difference, a positive difference of ten percentage points. We were also curious about what the impact of pre-K participation had on those students' kindergarten scores. So we tracked that cohort back even one more year to see what their pre-K experience was. And I will say the limitation is, of course, we can only track them back and see if they participated in our pre-K programs. So we do recognize there's a pool of students who are having other pre-K experiences outside of Savannah-Chatham. But when we look at the ones who did not attend an SCCPSS pre-K program, we can see that their readiness rate at the beginning of kindergarten was thirty-five percent versus thirty-eight percent for those who did attend pre-K. Now, the difference in their third grade outcomes was only one point, but we are still seeing that, number one, there definitely was a difference at the beginning of kindergarten for our pre-K versus non-pre-K participants. And we actually did see a little more growth among those students who did not participate in Savannah-Chatham pre-K. So so far, all of this has been focused on their reading readiness and what their reading on grade level status was for third grade. But there were some other important things that we sort of took away from this cohort analysis. When we looked at that third grade pool of test scores, we had two thousand six hundred and eighty students represented. When we tracked them back to beginning of year kindergarten scores, that was one thousand eight hundred and eighty-two students. So we recognize that that difference represents about a thirty percent mobility rate within this cohort of students. And then when we track it back to that pre-K experience, we identified nine hundred and twenty-eight who attended the Savannah-Chatham pre-K programs. And so that tells us that of our third grade test takers in 2022, only about thirty-five percent of them participated in a Savannah-Chatham pre-K. And, yes?
Thank you for stopping for a moment. So that last slide, my question, when I looked at the lack of a difference between whether you were a pre-K or not, I wondered did that mean that there were so few in our pre-K compared to our total population that it didn't look like it made a difference? Although we know the literature says that it does make a difference.
Yeah, and I, I think that's probably, I think the numbers lend themselves to the results. And then I think there's probably also some other factors at play, one of which we probably were gonna talk about here, which was this population of spring third grade test takers, we gotta think about what happened to them in their early years where they're building those foundational skills and reading. So they had a normal kindergarten year, right? But then their first and second grade years were the years impacted by the pandemic learning conditions. And just, not even just the learning conditions, but the world conditions, right? So these students were impacted at like a very critical stage in their reading development. And so, you know, one of the reasons we did look at that kindergarten and pre-K data was because in the back of our minds was all of this, all of the things that we know, not only from our own data, but from national research, about the types of factors that influence these reading outcomes, right? So we know that the pre-K and kindergarten experiences, and then that feeds into first grade readiness. grade readiness, and as students move on through those critical early years, we know there's the environmental factors at home and in the community, as well as the learning environment within the school. And so all of these things are things that we have to be mindful of when we're looking at these data outcomes. And I, yeah.
Just related to that, we're looking at GMASS data from twenty, school year twenty-one, twenty-two, correct?
Correct.
So there were seven other districts we're using as cohorts. Didn't the different districts emphasize GMASS differently? I mean, here, we kind of downplayed it a bit. Other districts might have just said, focus on it, we're going to really go full war. So I don't know how we account for that, but I mean, maybe I'm misremembering, but we knew that there were, there was a downplay on the importance of GMASS.
Yeah.
Anything else that was going on.
And I think that probably, I think there was probably a bigger discrepancy in spring of two thousand and twenty-one, when we weren't even required to test all of the students, right? And so you definitely saw different districts handling that focus differently. But I do think it did continue even into last spring, because even though we were back in school physically, there was still a lot going on, right? We had the rolling closures and a lot of absences and a lot of issues with the vacancies and difficulty filling those transportation. All that stuff was going on. And so I think, I don't want to say that we downplayed it, but we certainly tried to make it clear that student well-being, teacher and staff well-being, and getting students back into just the routines of school were probably a higher priority than high-stakes tests. And and you're absolutely right, we can't really speak as to what other districts may have done in their approach to that. And so, and I do think when we start talking about all of those factors, right, I do think it helps come to light exactly what impact that can have on those scores when we do a comparison of a higher performing school and a lower performing school within our own district. So if we look at, in this context, School A had twenty-two percent of students in third grade who were reading at or above grade level in spring of twenty-two, and School B had seventy-nine percent. Well, when you look at School A versus School B on some of these indicators that we track, yes, School A is a lower performing school, but School A also has five times the rate of economically disadvantaged student enrollment. They have twice as much student mobility. They had four times as many student absences, ten times as many out-of-school suspension. One thing that we did know was that School A actually did have more participation in an SCC PSS pre-K program. But again, we also have to acknowledge that in School B, there are a lot of other options for pre-K that we would probably not be able to capture with with regard to their pre-K experience. We also didn't see much of a difference in teacher attendance. However, School A has less experienced teachers, and School A has far more vacancies that occurred in school year two thousand and twenty-two than School B. So it's really easy for us to go down and and look at these school comparisons when we're looking at the data, right? But these are all factors that affect what happens with that school's outcomes.
I love this graph, by the way. The only thing I would add on there is that if we can figure out like a compass around, like a radius around each school of crime stats as well, because a lot of these kids, whether at School A or School B, they live in those those communities, they walk, they they want to be able to walk to school, and the families want to be a part of the community. So I think that that's also something that.
Yeah, that that is a great point. You know, we captured data points that were internal, but there are certainly data points that are external to our district that also would be reflected in these outcomes.
I'd love to have an informal session where we could analyze those indicators that we as a board could have a direct influence and impact on, and those which are beyond our control. I'm looking at attendance. I'm sure there's a lot we could do to change how many of our students come to school out of a hundred and eighty days and get them closer to that a hundred days. I think that's something we could do, and that it would make a big difference, as opposed to the harder mobility rate and that kind of thing. So I sure hope we'll take that chart and run with it in terms of our impact going forward.
I'll I'll remind everybody that this is a refashioned Chevron report.
Go back to the old Chevron reports, and you'll see this very information, because
it does impact student achievement. Now, we are working with the City of Savannah, so I do want to make sure I point out to you that we're working with the City of Savannah to get their information on the statistics around crime, because what we see through Handle With Care and our other partnerships is a greater attendance challenge in areas where there are gunshots fired overnight, where there are high rates of criminal activity, which is probably a school, a School A. So those things have direct impact on all of these outcomes, which definitely impacts how, when the children come and how they perform when they are there. So yes, that information is, I mean, we can extract it ourselves, but the City of Savannah is definitely trying to help us to to get that. We all know those areas. We watch television, we read the newspaper, we get the community alerts. We know that. But it's helpful when we can put it so that you can see it.
And Dr. Vavet, teachers with three-plus years' experience, isn't that something HR would have some control and impact on?
Well, we've had this conversation before. I'll invite you, Ms. Paula, go to to look at our video. We had extended conversations about moving our stronger teachers to schools where there were needs, and there were very, very strong opinions about demanding that teachers be assigned in certain places. We can revisit that conversation. We talked about that when we had the problem of teacher poaching after we started experiencing turnaround in schools, and some schools that were forced to do so developed competencies with struggling students that schools that were, that principals who were not in such struggling schools, but wanted those competencies for themselves, and they poached those teachers from the schools that had been struggling. And that was when we, we started having that conversation, when that was brought to my attention, and I shared it with our colleagues. We've also talked about the culture of schools and people wanting to teach where they want to teach, in cultures that feel native to them, in school cultures that feel native to them. And sometimes the schools where those needs exist don't feel culturally native to the teachers that we need there. And over time, when we've had this conversation, teachers, some of them have demonstrated to us through their actions, their inclination to be in some of those different schools.
It's not just that, it's not just teachers with three-plus years' experience, because there are plenty of fifteen-year teachers that are low performers. It's how high a performer you are, regardless of years of experience. So it's both. Very small, very small. Sorry. Just like in any industry anywhere, okay?
How come all of the, so many bad teachers don't end up in School B? You know? Since we know people are incompetent, of course, you know, everything. How is it that so many more end up in a School A than a School B?
Maybe there are in School B, but some of the teachers are so good in School B, they cover that curve. And you don't get to know how many stay, because you have like twenty superstars that are carrying the load for the whole school.
Or maybe the principal at the other school makes certain that the teachers look good, even though they're not teaching.
So you are moving into the activity that we had planned for you to.
Let's not steal any thunder here, y'all.
Question about the attendance?
Sure.
Do we not have something in our attendance policy regarding the number of days attended before moving to the next grade? And I know that the attendance, but I'm curious how that policy relates to the number of student absences and whether or not they are able to move to the next grade.
So I believe there is some reference to attendance and days. I believe it's unex, is it unexcused days absent? It's unexcused days absent. However, the thing we have to keep in mind with this data that we're looking at, students were being quarantined, right? We were still having lots of rates of illness, and, right, this is two thousand and twenty-two. So in school year two thousand and twenty-two, we had quite a bit of students who who missed school because they were quarantined. And and frankly, we were putting out the message that if your child feels sick, please don't send them to school. So, yeah.
But I'd be curious, like, how long are we going to kind of let that slide? Because I know that there are students that are abusing that freedom.
Students, that. Well, I think that, you know, we are adjusting with DPH guidance this week, just like everybody else is. But I also think that, you know, even before this two thousand and twenty-two, one thing you must remember about elementary, elementary children, a lot of times, their their attendance issues are not related to them. Their attendance issues are related directly to the status of the parents and the family and their commitment. So we have our biggest issues with kindergarten and first grade, that's where our biggest issues around attendance are. Those little ones, it's easy for them to stay home, and people not see them as having to be at school. But those are, and pre-K is the same, really. We have challenges there, but we definitely want them to come. But I think, you know, it is the community's respect for and value for children being in school that we need to work on collectively. That's why I said in my email to you, it's about collective understanding, but it's also about helping us understand, everything cannot be solved at the school. We have to build that collective ownership of student outcomes, because it's real easy to sit at the speaker's table and say, the teachers do a horrible job. You haven't been a teacher, don't know anything about the current context in which we live. It's really easy to do that until you get inside the classroom and recognize all the things that the teachers have to deal with. And the pandemic has only exacerbated that. Doesn't mean everybody's doing the best they can, probably not. But I would suggest to you that most people are doing a great job with all the things that are laid at their feet. Our still, our children still need to to be able to move forward, and that's why a growth model is much more indicative of the progress they're making. If they're there a hundred and eighty days, it's great. But if they're not there a hundred and eighty days, if they come at ten o'clock and leave at one-thirty, they're not getting the full breath. Actually, they had a great lunch, but they may not have gotten all the instruction of the morning. So we got past some activities.
That needs to be on that chart. Excuse me. What Dr. Vavet said, that needs to be an indicator. Community involvement with, yeah, right under vacant positions, another growth, so that when we put this out to the public, they see that your participation has everything to do with what's happening. Evidently, the communities around School B are taking that much more seriously and carefully than the students, than the communities around School A, and that has to be publicized.
All right. And then to wind down this discussion, you know, we've, we've spent a lot of time talking about an achievement indicator that is a sta, status indicator as of the end of the school year, right? We didn't see what happened all throughout the school year to get students to that point. And so we wanted to make sure that we shared the growth data that we do have from our district formative assessment with regard to the third grade reading outcomes. So these students, when they began third grade, twenty-five percent of them were scoring up in these green levels, indicating that they were sort of at grade level readiness. By the end of the year, on I-Ready, that had gone up to forty-eight percent. So while those outcomes may not have been quite where we wanted them to be, we can see that there actually was a tremendous amount of growth made throughout the year. Also, remember when the I-Ready folks came and talked about the correlation, right, between I-Ready and our state test? So we would have predicted forty-eight percent students at or above grade level on reading, our actual was forty-six. That's a pretty good alignment. And again, what that state test does not show is where those students started out at about twenty-five percent. And so not only do we have all these differential outcomes that have these community factors, but we're also not really looking, you know, that that was based on an achievement status indicator. But we know there was tremendous growth, and that is really where we start to see, like I said, our, our teachers doing their best, our teachers coming in, doing the best, facing these challenges that they themselves and their students have, and doing everything that they can to overcome them. And so I believe our academic team is going to talk about some of the strategies that have been employed to help us get where we were able to grow from.
Thank you, Kristen.
We need to take a bio, yeah, we need to take a bio break. Can we just take a break for like five minutes to allow that team to transition in?
Great presentation. Thank you.
Yeah.
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 we can definite, we definitely will end differently based on our circumstances and our situations. So these are just reminder slides that you've already seen. And then building upon what data and accountability did, from an academic standpoint, we included a few other influencers as it relates to coming into the schoolhouse. Students have previous experiences. Our parents have perceptions, beliefs, and attitudes about school. We have to look at our parents' literacy levels as well as, some of our students are actually caretakers, even at age six and seven, they're responsible for younger siblings. And so they are actually the caretakers in the home during the day. Also, their socialization skills. And then, of course, we did touch on our teacher's experience level and we thought it was definitely important to include the pandemic and the rolling closures. And then we included how our parents value education as well. And so at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Drought, Dr. Brown, and Dr. Brian Evans, who's going to really dig into the curriculum and the different strategies and interventions that are being utilized.
Good afternoon.
Um, I just, there was, I think there was a little misunderstanding yesterday in my presentation. I want Dr. Buck to know that only the pre-K children take a nap, not the teachers. The teachers have to work during nap time. So I just wanted to give you real quick, that I, I'm very happy to report that all of my classes in pre-K are full except for the two high schools in Formy. Um, we're only missing eighteen children to fill these seats. We have wait lists at every school. So it is a wonderful rebound from the pandemic. We're very excited. Kind of scary, I've got three calls this morning before I came. Ms. Drought, what are the dates for next year? I'm like, oh, please, let me get through this year. Let me get through these next couple of months. But there's already that excitement for next year. So to me, that's just, I, I was so excited because it hurt my heart during the pandemic to just see my numbers drop like that. Also, my numbers reflect just what facilities was talking about of where the growth is. My, my waitlist numbers reflect that. So anyway, just a little side thing. So we're going to talk about curriculum. When the pandemic hit, pre-K had adopted a new curriculum. It's called creative curriculum. We decided, since the teachers were virtual, that we would hold off, you know, implementing this program while they were at home virtually. So last year was our, really our first year of implementing the curriculum. Um, it's a project-based curriculum. It's stu- based on student interest. We have studies on balls, buildings, clothes, exercise, insects, pets. But one of the things that is really advantageous in pre-K is that we also allow our teachers, our veteran teachers especially, to include their thematic, their favorite thematic units. You know, that they can still teach author studies while using creative curriculum. They can have a lesson on ocean since, you know, we live in Savannah, Georgia. There's so many creative outlets that we allow the teachers have, the teachers to have. At the beginning of the year, we are so fortunate that the state provides us with twelve weeks of lesson plans. Our pre-K teachers, I might go say don't have to think, but they can put their energy towards getting that classroom rolling, getting these children settled in and not worry about creating lesson plans. These lesson plans are amazing. Every time I see them, I think, man, I'm going to go back to the classroom because this is awesome. It gives them everything they need. So that, that's pretty much curriculum in pre-K. We also, the state allows us to use our GELs, which is the Georgia Early Learning and Development Standards. We can teach using the GELs, as long as our lessons are based on, on our standards, you know, the state approves that. They do come in and audit our lesson plans, they review our lesson plans, they visit twice a year, they ask our teachers for lesson plans, so they are heavily involved in what's going on in our classroom. This year, we are really focusing on social emotional. The state realized after last year that we needed to back up a little and address the needs of our children. They're providing us with some social emotional kits that should be arriving anytime. These have social emotional lessons already planned for the teachers. They're providing us with books, you know, to support these lessons. So, you know, just some really great things going on in, in the pre-K world. And three-year-olds. So you all have a copy of the GELs. There's, um, we have different domains. We talk about the physical development of the child, which is so important, those large muscles, those small fine motor skills. We talk about their social and emotional, their approach to play, you know, may helping them be independent, helping them reach out to, you know, their peers and their teachers, helping them, um, so the next one is communication. Their, their language, their receptive language, their expressive language. Our next one is the cognitive, the, the math, the literacy, the science, the social studies, what we're actually learning, you know, what, you know, you see, you think of the first through twelfth grade, what they're doing. This is under the cognitive section. But these GELs are what drives our instructions. We have the GEL start actually at birth and build up to five years old. So if you want to see what the standard, the first standard is for birth, it tells you all the steps, what should they be doing at birth, first, one-year-old, two-year-old, three-year-old, four-year-old. So it builds. A lot of times when school starts, our babies are still three years old. So the teacher will back up and she'll look at that three-year-old GEL instead of that four-year-old GEL to help plan lessons and support that child as he matures in the pre-K. Uh, we, our next slide is our assessment. Our assessment is work sampling online. This, of course, is what the state requires us to use. It's an online platform. We are literally building a portfolio on every child. If you went into the classroom and you opened up work sampling online and you wanted to see what Johnny knows, his, his platform should show you everything that Johnny can do. It should give you a picture of Johnny. It's not, you know, the whole class is doing, can do this activity. It's what Johnny can do, what Suzie can do. And every child's platform looks different. There are some, you know, some group, like, we use matrices where it's quick, quick, something we can assess quickly. Like, can the child have self-help in the restroom? You know, check, 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 check. But most of this is individualized plans. This is a, I laugh when, when I saw this, this is a typical pre-K classroom, but if you've ever been in one of my classrooms, it's much, much busier than this. But we do, you know, like I talked about yesterday, that large group, that's where everything, that's where the magic happens, that's where we meet in the morning. Typically, there's a rocking chair or some kind of teacher chair. We have the block center usually around that large group because they need that carpet to build their block with their blocks. We have a math center, a science center. The science center has a sensory table where we change out monthly with the items in there. We have a reading center, art center, dramatic play. These are all the, the things that are going on in our classroom. This learning environment really drives our instruction. It's so very important. When the state comes in, that's one of the first things they're looking at, is our learning We, we talked about the continuum from the three-year-old to the five-year-old, where the three-year-old comes in and, you know, we're teaching them by the end of the school year, how to hold the book upright, turn the pages. And we just continue to build on that. Listens when read to. You know, they all, they sometimes have a hard time with that because they all have something to say. My mama said, but they, you know, to learn to sit there and listen to a story, you know, and it builds. And they're recognizing, they're recognizing some letters as a three-year-old, we're recognizing most letters. And then by kindergarten, the end of kindergarten, five years old, they should be knowing all their letters. So it's just a continuum that we just are building on from the three, four, and five-year-old perspective.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you see many referrals for children with speech problems with the three-year-olds? I know that they say they're still developing, but I can pretty much identify immediately with my niece and nephew, so what, what procedures and processes are you using when you identify a child that's struggling with this decoding and?
Well, the first thing we do with a child when we start school and the teacher, you know, we give them a couple of weeks to get going and the teacher identifies that there is, there is a problem that she's noticing. She goes straight to the speech teacher at the school. And the speech teacher at the school will give them interventions and then we'll start the RTI process. And the teacher will work on the interventions, you know, that the speech teacher provided and, and sometimes they'll go in and tweak it, maybe that's not working. But also, we're so fortunate in our school district that we have the preschool intervention team that children from, in the community can actually be screened through them. And so, so many children that come to us in pre-K are already receiving community-based services. So that is something, you know, I'm going to share a little fast story, I'll let Troy get started. That's so important with pre-K to me is just yesterday, we identified a child who was having behavior problems. We started the interventions and the first thing we do is take them in, get their vision and hearing screened. Child couldn't see. He could not see. He was, took the test and he was doing this. So Ms. Dr. Tracy pulls her little magic machine out, she tests his eyes, he cannot see. His behavior was screaming to us, help. You know, and to me, that's so awesome in pre-K that we're in a school district like this that provides all these wonderful resources.
Yes. Music. How much music?
Oh, lots. Lots of music. You know, we, intentional, intentional. We plan intentionally, we plan for music. But also, if we're on that carpet, it's just not a good day. We'll get them up and we'll put some music on and we'll start everything. You know, so we use it in two ways, but we definitely plan intentional music. One of the first things we teach them in phonological awareness, we start working on these listening skills. What better way to teach them music?
We'll talk later.
All right.
Play some now.
Has the age cutoff date changed back to July? Am I remembering that at one time was planned?
It was. There was a lot of talk around that, but it's still set, honor before September first.
Okay. Cause there's so much age variability in the classroom right now. Is there any talk of it?
I haven't heard any. And you know, and we see, like I said, that we start school, so we're there first. I have a baby this year whose birthday is actually September first. So he's a babe.
Okay. Can you, I'll just make a point about who, who develops the curriculum for pre-K? Who develops the curriculum for pre-K?
Who develops?
Yeah. Is the individual teacher developing the curriculum for pre-K or is it predetermined?
Well, like I said, they can use the creative curriculum that we purchased. Well, like I said, a lot of the veteran teachers have those, you know, themes that they just really like to use. And they, they came to me and said, when we were discussing this, you know, purchase a, a curriculum that gives us support, especially the new teachers, but also allows us to continue using our themes that we, we like. Some of their themes are amazing. You know, you go in and they've worked over the years to tweak them and they're very good. Thank you.
Okay. So this slide has, is twofold. One, it really talks about where at kindergarten level, this is where we start, the Georgia Standards of Excellence. And, and the second part of this slide, it kind of depicts what the progression is on one particular reading standard from kindergarten through third grade. So for example, in kindergarten, with prompting and support, ask and answer questions with, I mean, about key details in a text. So when you get over to grade one, you're doing the same thing, but without prompting. So problem is, if you get a student who comes to first grade for the first time and hasn't had the prompting and had that, you got to go back and make sure you're doing that as a teacher. So it's very careful as we progress through those, the teacher is assessing that to make sure they got that particular standard, they check off and they can move on. So this is a progression, a kind of, you know, it's kind of interesting how the rigor and the depth of knowledge go up as, as the years go as well. Skip that slide a little bit after that. So scientifically-based reading instruction includes explicit and systematic instruction in the following areas. So really depends on developmental level of the student and what you're working with, you know, does a student need more help with oral language and any of these areas? So there's, there generally is a progression with that too. So if you think about oral language, oral language is a system through which we use spoken words to express our knowledge, ideas, and feelings. So what does a teacher do to get that to happen in the classroom? They encourage storytelling and conversation, those type of things. They summarize what they've heard. They'll take words and they'll mix them around to see if it sounds correct. So that's the type of activities, and it really depends on the child, what activities best fits that need in their oral language development. Next, phonemic awareness. This is the ability to identify and manipulate individual sounds and spoken words. So the teacher's activity you see in the classroom, basically to give you some sort of point of references, where the teacher is teaching blending, splitting of words, rhyming, alliteration, comparing and contrasting, and just manipulating words in general for them to start understanding that phonological awareness. Because the better a child can do that, is a great predictor of reading, later reading success, or whether they're having some difficulty. So if they are, then the teacher can go back and work on those areas. So the next bullet is phonics. Phonics instruction teaches the relationship between the letters, written letters or written language and the sounds we speak and, and hear. So in, in this situation, that's where the teachers are teaching the, you know, basically the consonant sounds, vowels, long, long vowel, short vowel, all those, which I probably didn't learn until I was in college, the difference between the two. But, so, but this is really important because, you know, the significant improvements when, in children's reading occurs when they are able to recognize words. And so once they start sounding them out and understanding how the words go together and they can make, you know, their vocabulary can certainly start increasing, which gets to their reading comprehension level. Fluency. Fluency, researchers back in the day used to argue, is it really important about fluency? But fluency is defined as the ability to read with speed, accuracy, and proper expression. So that's when you put the intonation into it and your feelings and stuff like that. And the, the ability where you're not stumbling over reading and that fluency, then your comprehension becomes a little better because you're not stopping and then starting again and those type of things. So, you know, kids love to, in a, you know, in a primary grade classroom, love to kind of even track their fluency levels and things. And so then you can turn it into a math lesson as well. So, but teachers are very good about assessing the student to make sure that word decoding or word recognition is not the source of difficulty. So if it is, then they may have to go back and work with fluency, decoding, and, and those type of things. So again, the kids like to do the time measures about how are they getting better with fluency and stuff like this, so you can make it really fun in the classroom. Activities you also may see in the classroom is they may say something to the student, ask them to repeat, repeat it back to me, or they'll read short passages. And then they try to read the short passage as, you know, and get better with the progression of that and the fluency. Of course, vocabulary is key to reading comprehension. Readers cannot understand what they're reading without knowing what the words are and what they mean. So activities that you will see in a regular literacy-rich classroom or read-alouds, and I often say in those, they need to be appropriate because if you have a child that has difficulty reading, do you think they want to read out loud in, in a, in a full classroom? So at some points, when teachers are making the child do it, that's really doing a disservice to the child because it's stifling, stifling their reading ability. So maybe having that private, private reading session with them and individual one-on-one kind of thing is the best thing that you can do. I certainly experienced that as a child when I came back from England and when everybody else was laughing at me because I said, they were saying cant and I was saying kon or ba- bath and, I mean, ba and that, that sort of thing. And they were laughing at me because the teacher was making me read out loud. And that's quite embarrassing. So, you know, it really stifled my ability to read out loud. And you can tell, still having a problem with that. So. There's lessons also on how to associate new word, new words with known words. For example, car, vehicle, those type of activities you see in the classroom. So if it is, then they may have to go back and work with fluency, decoding and those type of things. So again, the kids like to do the time measures about how are they getting better with fluency and stuff like this, so you can make it really fun in the classroom. Activities you also may see in the classroom is they may say something to the student, ask them to repeat it back to me, or they'll read short passages. And then they try to read the short passage, you know, and get better with the progression of that and the fluency. Of course, vocabulary is key to reading comprehension. Readers cannot understand what they're reading without knowing what the words are and what they mean. So activities that you will see in a regular literacy-rich classroom or read-alouds, and I often say in those, they need to be appropriate because if you have a child that has difficulty reading, do you think they want to read out loud in a full classroom? So at some points, when teachers are making the child do it, that's really doing a disservice to the child because it's stifling their reading ability. So maybe having that private reading session with them and individual one-on-one kind of thing is the best thing that you can do. I certainly experienced that as a child when I came back from England and when everybody else was laughing at me because I said, they were saying cant and I was saying konnt, or bathe and, I mean, bath and that sort of thing. And they were laughing at me because the teacher was making me read out loud. And that's quite embarrassing. So, you know, it really stifled my ability to read out loud. And you can tell, still having a problem with that. There's lessons also on how to associate new words with known words. For example, car, vehicle, those type of activities you see in the classroom. Use new words in sentences. For example, something like you may want to talk about, the child went across the street swiftly and then came back. Or something like that. So then you kind of say, what do you think the word swiftly means? And then the kids can use context clues to figure out the words are. So there's a variety of activities that really depends on the student's needs. So definitely in a classroom, a literacy-rich classroom, you're going to create opportunities for kids to see, hear and read and write new words. So always the best thing to do is encourage those students to use new vocabulary. And Ms. Fraser talked about it yesterday, you know, you have, we had word walls, we have words sticking everywhere, stuff like that. So when they don't understand the word, they can certainly relate it to what it's near, which is a great thing. Then finally, we get to comprehension. Obviously comprehension is the understanding and the interpretation of what we read. So this is when you ask open-ended questions. So what do you think happens, why do you think this happened? Or even doing inferences and things like that help kids understand and comprehend because you say, what do you think's going to happen next? And then they'll give you some sort of idea. And let's read a little bit more and comprehend what really happens and see if we match it up. And they love playing that. So that's kind of what you see, a lot of different strategies that we use in reading comprehension. Note-taking skills, summarizing different things, make predictions, make summaries. Those are the type of activities you see that help with reading comprehension. Then the last on this slide, and when we talk about it sometimes, when we first came, Wilson Foundations, it's not foundations is the title. People were saying, you have typo there. So, but Wilson Foundations is really, it's making reading fun. It lays the groundwork for lifelong literacy, the program does. And it's where you see the K-3 students, they receive a systematic program in the critical foundation skills emphasizing things like this. Phonemic awareness, phonics, high-frequency words, fluency, vocabulary, comprehension, writing, all those type of things. You see that in Wilson Foundations. And again, it's just a fun way to teach these major skills. So these are some other activities you see teachers do in the classroom when they're working with reading comprehension strategies, using context clues. I kind of already talked about that. Inferring stuff. We see a lot of graphic organizers because it gives that pictorial kind of thing for kids to start seeing things and making parallel relationships to things. And so they understand and start comprehending a little better. So these are a few samples. And it's finally my turn to leave the stage.
Can I ask a question about adults' word lists? I remember back teaching back in the nineties, that was big. Teaching from that sight word list. Are they still doing that with the adults' word list?
No, you don't see it a lot. You do, but you don't. It depends on whether the teacher is a veteran teacher, whatever, there's other strategies we use to do that. But I'm glad you brought that up because I do have to share this story. When I was, I think I was in Sister Princeton when I was working one morning in the prime time because they were a little shorthanded. And there was a child that was in third grade that probably could identify maybe pre-primer sight words. And so I would just do, it was the thing then, so I would just hold up the word. And then if he knew it, I'd put it over here in the stack. And so, and we would just keep practicing, almost like you do multiplication patterns. Keep practicing, keep practicing, like that. But one day, the words that he knew was laying there. And he decided to put the words in order and he goes, and then he read it. He says, hey, I just made a sentence. And I said, you just read too. So it's kind of interesting. So he picked up reading to sight words. And that's probably the way I learned it because, again, I didn't learn the difference between long and short. I was a toddler. I'm kidding, by the way. Does that, did that answer your question?
Yes.
So sometimes you see it, but it's kind of, kind of a blended approach to doing it with phonics, okay?
So I'm the last one. And I talk real slow. Because I'm a country girl. And I don't have any popcorn to give you. And I don't have a catchy phrase. But what I do have is some specific processes, strategies, interventions and programs that we utilize to address our learners who need acceleration. In education, we often discuss Stephen Covey's circle of concern and circle of influence. And we hope that we've raised awareness and shed more light on the many challenges that some of our students face and how these challenges impact not only literacy development, but student achievement at large. Our concerns are valid. Our concerns are real. And being aware of these challenges helps us to constantly reframe our circle of influence, to make it larger. This awareness and concern lead to continuous new ideas and innovation to support our learners with literacy. As we look at differentiated, data-driven, small-group instruction. I have to back up a minute, I'm sorry. You can tell I'm, I want to walk away. When you walk into a literacy classroom in K through third grade, you're going to begin with a mini lesson. And the mini lesson is going to be teacher-led. But research teaches us that any solid lesson for elementary school and any lesson anywhere really, has an I do part, a we do part, and a you do part. So that teacher mini lesson is delivered whole group. So it's whole group instruction. Every child, like you all are the class, I'm the teacher, is whole group. If you get it, you get it. If you don't, well, oh, well, I don't know. Spray and pray. That's what whole group is like. Spray and pray. So once we do, and that teacher's doing a read aloud. And she's, you know, she may be at the board. And she may be, she may have a piece of chart paper. And she may have an organizer. So this is where the we do comes in. And then we move a little bit from the spray and pray. Because with the we do, the students are actually doing something. They're taking notes, they're answering questions. That teacher, they may be responding and writing. They may be talking to a neighbor about what they're learning. All that happens during the we do part. That teacher may be providing clarification, giving feedback. So there's a lot that takes place during the we do. And it's during that we do that the teacher gets the first opportunity to plan for differentiation. Because she's able to see, or he's able to see, what those students do not know and what they do know in real time. So after your I do and your we do, you move to the you do. The student does independently. But in a literacy classroom, we move to small groups, differentiated small groups. So the students do a lot of the you do in their stations. And we determine what they do based on the data and based on teacher observation. Because we can't take the teacher observation element out of this. The teachers are with the students every day, all day. They know what they can do, they know what they can't do. However, we rely heavily on how our students also perform on iReady and A-Mira to determine what's going to happen in some of those small groups as well. Now, in those small groups, if you were to walk into a classroom, you may see students working on vocabulary development. We call it word work. You may see some students in the writing station and they may be finishing up a writing from when they were with the teacher during the I do, we do portion. You might see some students working on even iReady or A-Mira during that reading lesson. You may have a technology station and students will be there working on an assignment that the teacher went into iReady and gave to them based on where they're performing, based on that diagnostic. So many, many things happen during small group instruction after that teacher-led mini lesson. Mini lesson could have been a read aloud, but the teacher read it aloud, not Troy. It could be a Wilson's Foundations lesson. Or it might have been a Trace writing lesson. But we take what we do in the teacher-led part and we move it to small groups. And we make sure that as our groups of children move from station to station, they get what they need. So I might be working on something different in this group than that group worked on based on what my teacher knows about me and based on my teacher observation of me. Now, there's a special table in that literacy room, and that's the teacher table. That's where guided reading takes place, using the leveled readers. So each school has a leveled bookroom. And the students get to go to the teacher's table. And the teacher also leads them in activities based on what level they're on. Now, these groups are fluid. So you're not a blue bird forever. You're not a red bird forever. You get to move based on your performance. So the groups are prescriptive groups, but they are very fluid groups. This is the small group literacy layout. Does anyone have any questions about this piece before we go a little bit deeper?
With the, you know, I retired some years ago. Now I'm just asking about these theories that will talk to us, how a god is multiple intelligent. Are they still incorporating that in that differentiation, you know, as far as some children with body kinesthetic? Your students like Mr. Breaman that had to go in the back of the class a few minutes ago and stand up for a while, those that learned, you know, through movement and then as Mr. Moss mentioned about the music. Are they pushing that theory now because they get back in the nineties? How a god is multiple intelligent?
It does happen in our classrooms. I don't know how much, I would have to research that myself to find out how much of a best practice it is. But I know about multiple intelligences. And I know that they are very important. And we do make sure that our lessons are designed for the tactile learner or the visual learner or the kinesthetic learner. And we do believe in lots of music and movement. Lots. So at that guided reading table, the last four bullets, those things will happen at that guided reading table as well as the teacher sees fit. So this is tier one instruction and maybe a little tier two instruction. What happens when that student is not successful during regular small group? This is where we really start to drill down and meet the needs of students individually. So everything falls really under RTI, response to intervention. And that's where we identify students based on diagnostic assessments who need more. They're not getting it whole group when we spray and pray. They're not getting it in small groups either. They need a little bit more. So we meet on those students. We identify the students. We meet on them every four weeks to see if the interventions are working. So we're going to select interventions, put those interventions in place. You know, this student might need sight word practice once a day. So that goes in the student's plan. This student might need oral reading fluency. So we place that in the student's plan. RF, 10 minutes a day, three out of five days a week. So we meet every four, and we chart it. We meet every four weeks to see if the student is being successful. If the student is being successful, we let them stay there a little bit and we just continue to monitor. If they're not being successful, then we move them to the next tier, which would be tier three, and we provide even more intensive support. Another thing we do would be, we incorporate an instructional focus block into our school day. Forty-five minutes to maybe an hour during the school day. In our schools, the students are afforded the opportunity to work specifically on what they need. Whatever skills we've identified based on the diagnostics. So you may see iReady happening, you may see A-Mira happening. You may see other programs happening depending on what's happening in that school and in that classroom. But that is a time when we use quite a bit of technology so that students can get that individualized learning that they need. We also utilize iReady, Common Formative Assessment Data. And those CFAs are given every two weeks or so. And that's based on that whole group instruction. You remember, I talked about that teacher-led group? That teacher-led group is an own-grade level group. So if I'm a third grader, the teacher is up, she's teaching third grade standards. So every five to 10 days, that teacher is going to assess those students to see whether or not they are mastering that standard. If they are mastering the standard, great. But what happens when they're not? iReady provides us a prescription for that student. And it creates differentiated groups for those students in the class. And it gives us an individualized learning plan. So that's what iReady will do for us. And then we have A-Mira where our students work on oral reading fluency and some comprehension. So all these are things that we're doing to provide differentiation and the interventions. Wilson's Foundations, sometimes we do some double dosing with that. So they may get it whole group, but then if you need it, you get it again. With the guided reading focus, we have some teachers who do guided reading twice a day. They do it in the morning and then they do it again during the instructional focus block. That happens. And we're targeting specific skills. And the biggest difference there would be, instead of having five students at the table, you might only have two students at your table. Small group reading, same as guided reading. We have PSYOP. And that is a program for our ELL students. And it is the way that we've identified to help them to be successful academically. As with Orton Gillingham, that is for our specialized instruction learners. And that's to help them with literacy as well. We made it to the end. I'll just stand and wait a little while. Are you happy? I can look at your faces and tell you want me to hurry. The forward outlook. I'm standing between you and five o'clock somewhere. Implementing these strategies consistently in the three-year-old program through third grade will aid in preparing our students for reading on grade level by the end of third grade. But I want to remind you, this works really well when they come when they're three. If you don't come until first grade, sometimes you get the scores we just saw. We do realize that sometimes you will come at three. And your parents will do everything that they can do. And we will do everything that we can do. And you will still need more support. So in order to meet the needs of all students entering school with different levels of educational experiences, exposure, support, additional acceleration opportunities and resources may be needed for those learners who aren't on target for reading on grade level by the end of third grade. This is our forward outlook. We would like, and we have Ms. Kay Akins, who's now Associate Superintendent for Professional Learning, sitting there. We would like to continue providing ongoing professional learning. I know she's going to help us. And the teaching of reading. And not just the teaching of reading, but what that looks like in a classroom. And what the assessment of reading looks like in the classroom. We want to create structures for public, private, and home-based preschool providers to connect with us to ensure we are consistently speaking a common language about literacy development. The same language. We would love to be able to partner with our local university. And I get really excited about this one, y'all, because I went to Georgia College, and we had Peabody. Peabody was where I learned to teach school. Peabody was where I decided to be a teacher. Because my sister was gonna be a teacher, and I wasn't. And I used to go down there and hang out with the 3- and 4-year-olds. And they'd be having a good time. And one time, the, uh, director looked at me and said, "You're in charge. I'm gonna catch a call. I'll be right back." And I was there with 4-year-olds and 3-year-olds that were looking at me. So you know what I did? Taught. And I loved it. And I left that place and went and changed my major to education that day. Because of Peabody! So we want a Peabody. We want to create some type of birth-to-case certification and an early learning center at one of these local colleges so that students like me can kind of walk down there and check it out and look. And it was great, because it's like an observation-type deal where it has the glass, and you could pick, you can look at them, but they can't see you. It was amazing. So I'm really excited, and I, I, I just know that's gonna come to fruition. I can't wait. Because that's how we attract people and get them to come into education. You have to see it. Once you see those 3- and 4-year-olds, you're hooked. So we wanna do that. And we're gonna create a literacy task force. And it's gonna be in, composed of school, uh, district level and school level and community stakeholders. And we wanna just talk about what's working with literacy, what's not working with literacy, and continue coming up with great ideas to make sure that our students are readers and they are literate by the end of 3rd grade. And the last thing would be to continue training, um, the staff. Well, we wanna add additional staff with specialized training to support literacy. And we've added some learning specialists, but we'd love to add some more, because they've been very helpful. Your reading recovery teachers are very helpful. We'd love to see and add reading recovery teachers, which would be housed in the school buildings and actually working with the students. So we want to see that come, um, to fruition as well. And then the last thing would be a reading adoption. And that will be to allow us to continue to, um, enhance the work that we've already started with literacy development and ensuring all our students read by the end of 3rd grade. And you made it with me to the end without nodding. Yay!
Renee? I'd like to make an action item, because so often we get this wonderful stuff, and then it kind of falls away, and we forget. So Dr. Buck and Mr. Hediger, an action item in September that says, for all of our lowest-performing schools, we're gonna have a person dedicated to RTIs and a purse, and paras for every grade 1, 2, and 3. If all of this is that important, and we don't want the teacher burnout. Because tell me anybody in here who could do all that well as a teacher, all of that that she went through without any help, so that when I'm trying to do my two kids over here, David is acting up. Who's helping David? You know? Let's really take this seriously and move forward with it and not just leave this as a philosophical exercise. I, I beg us to think about doing something about it. Thank you.
So in your, I love the outlook and kind of where we're going from here. I think, um, another great opportunity is to engage with OB-GYNs and pediatricians, so that we are getting to the parents, to the moms before the child is even born to create that importance of the parent, of the first teacher.
Agreed.
And then, one other question I had was, or the, or question. So this is all fabulous for our, our little ones that are 3rd grade below, but what about the ones who have managed to progress through the system but still don't have the skills that they truly need to be able to be successful? Those that are upper elementary or even middle school that are still struggling with reading on grade level?
Yeah, so, so we have spec- a special, uh, uh, some, some certain programs for them, like our EIP for, uh, our, uh, all the way to grade 5, and then REP, Reading and Things Like That, to grade 6 on up. That, those programs help with that. They do individualized, differentiated instruction. So the same kind of, um, interventions that go into place. We do the RTI process, small group, those same. Most of our middle schools also do that instructional focus, well, all of our middle schools do instructional focus block, where they can pull kids that, when we look at their assessment data and kids struggling with reading and or math, then we can pull them that extra block to give them the individual, uh, care that they need, basically, or the individualized learning plan, to see if we can get them back on track. So it continues if we get to the upper grades.
Right.
We're also gonna have part of the literacy task force. We really focus on the early learners, but it'll also be some 6-12 persons on there too, to provide some input, to continue developing that. And then remember, in all of our grades 6 through 8, we use iReady, so they get those individualized learning plans in that as well.
With reading teachers, I know with the primary grades, we have reading teachers with reading specialists. What happens in middle school? Because most of this, you know, the teachers that are teaching English, ELA. Are there reading teachers in the middle schools? That just dedicate to teach reading, separate?
Some of our buildings do have the dedicated reading block. But what we have done is, in our professional development and professional learning work, incorporated reading strategies into that work for middle school teachers. Um, and we're also doing some work with progressions so that if you're a 6th grade teacher, you're able to be aware. We're making them more aware of what happens in, in the 5th grade reading class and what happens in the 4th grade reading class. And they're able, and I've seen this, they're, they, they're becoming more able to employ those strategies that are used at the elementary level in those middle school classrooms.
So, so for example, it was a requirement that, like, our middle school teachers also get the balanced literacy training?
Right.
So then you saw the ELA and the reading, all that, you know, meshed into the, I mean, it may be titled language in our classroom, but you're seeing that reading instruction going on at the same time in those balanced literacy classrooms.
They use a workshop.
Yeah. And so at one point, we, uh, I forget what grant was, Race to the Top, maybe, or something like that, that it was, uh, it was a push for all the middle school teachers to be reading certified. So we still have, uh, you know, several of those out there who are really great at using balanced literacy to help with that reading instruction in middle school.
Well, they can teach a burnout. With teachers without those certifications, it'd be great if they could be stipend for having those certifications.
Yeah, so with, I think, in some, in some of those cases, where they went back to add those certifications to it, we did pay stipends and do it, because it was all their time doing it. So there was some grants out there that did that. Same thing with ESOL. We pay for ESOL certifications to help and, and all those. It was very helpful. Which you'll see, the ESOL certification and the reading endorsement certification, the same reading strategies are involved. Because, you know, reading is kind of fundamental across the world. You know, it's just the vocabulary piece which is really neat. And so, that's why we see sometimes our Hispanic learners are coming in. They're picking up reading and doing well on the G-PAS very quickly after they learn the English language. Because somewhere they learned the foundation of reading. And, uh, so.
And in middle schools, they're also, um, they're using those reading strategies in their social studies classes and in those science classes, because it's reading for information. So they're taking those standards and using them during those blocks to help reinforce reading too, and try to close that gap.
Well, before Dr. Levett closes out, or whoever's gonna do that, um, I have a question for you all. How many of you remember being put in the red bird, blue bird, whatever? Okay, good. Now I can assess your age. Thank you.
Well, at least you know, you know the staff has a good sense of it. So that's our last, uh, presentation for today. We wanna give them a big round of applause for putting it all together. It has been an intense, uh, day and a half. But we do hope that we were able to, um, respond to most of the questions that you put forth. And we certainly have a number of do-outs from this session. And, um, as you reminded us, Mrs. Hall, we will try to make sure that we review the notes and, um, follow up on many of the points made. We know that we already need to have a, some separate sessions to finish the discussions about, uh, facility usage and, um, how we maximize those. That's a continuing conversation. We need to finish that. But we also need to make sure that we keep you posted on, um, student outcomes and, uh, many of the things that were mentioned both yesterday and today. We're gonna ask that you complete their, uh, evaluation, which was provided for you, and that Dr. Buck is gonna come with any final comments. But it's been our pleasure to provide these, uh, sessions for you today. We hope they've been helpful. I'll extend a special thanks to, um, the staff for joining us during this time, so you get an opportunity to meet them and to hear from them directly, since they are the people on the front line. Then I hope that we'll also, um, be receiving any additional questions from you after you've had an opportunity to reflect on whatever you have learned over these past, uh, two days. Dr. Buck?
Uh, just a real special thank you always to, uh, the superintendent's staff in her office and the board's staff in our office. You know, we, we sometimes just appear ourselves and everything's set up, and we just assume it's because we're so special. And, uh, we don't really stop and think about the loads, carloads that have been bringing stuff in and all of that. So to you folks in the back, thank you very much. As always, I, you know, leave these kinds of meetings with the school district, being so proud that I belong to, uh, a group that has employees that consider the needs of the student, that, uh, students, that we have a board that is likewise involved and interested in all the students. And, uh, even though I won't be a part, I look forward to, uh, the continued cooperation under the leadership of Mr. Moss with, uh, the board and the staff working together for all the students. And I think that is the best legacy any of us can give. But the fact of the matter is, what we've heard over the last few days, two days, is really what our focus always is. And, um, it's good to be a part. Real quickly, one or two of you, give me, uh, one word that says how you feel about the last two days. Sean? Focus. Denise?
Excited.
Excited. Connie?
Encouraged.
encouraged.
Renewal.
I'm sorry?
Renewal.
Renewal, Michael?
Fireworks.
Fireworks. Roger?
Emboldened.
Emboldened. Good. Staff members, anybody wanna, uh, wanna go through? Oh, Connie, I got you, I'm sorry.
Rewarded.
Rewarded, okay. Oh, there's, David, I'm sorry, he's always close to the food.
Timely.
Timely. We always have more to discuss than we have time for. But, uh, I think we got a lot done. I thought the dialogue was very, very, uh, candid and open. That has always been one of the things that made me proud about this group, because we can say things to each other and still walk out and feel good about each other. Unlike some school districts that we read about where people attempt to run over the superintendent, or something like that. That's true, North Georgia. Have a great weekend. If you're staying for the ballgame here, they're gonna have the, um, Booster Club in here in just a few minutes. So, uh, have a good weekend, folks.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you so much.